I will open up this meeting of the main planning board. Today's date is March twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty four, the time is seven oh five P M. All members of the planning board are present here in town hall. Now, please note, this meeting is being held in hybrid format, which means that members of the public and members of the board can participate here at town hall or virtually through the Zoom link. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. All right, let's open up, um, should we open up item one, Public Hearing to one twenty nine Acton Street?
Yes, for the, yes, for the cell tower, yeah.
I will, I will continue here in public hearing for one twenty nine Acton Street cell tower. Um, Phil, we had some pending questions last time. Would you like to bring the board on the broadcast?
Yes, there was a question that was raised regarding, um, who was the owner of the ownership? Was it under, um, a Fenton construction or, um? And so I duly researched it last week. We came up with a, uh, clause that we're going to add to all of the decisions from now on, just to make sure you can board them off to go through that, just clarifying the ownership. I said that all to you in my email this afternoon. I think that was, uh, that I also have Mr. Boucher is on, I think, oh, there, yep, okay. Uh, and, um, with that, I think we've wrapped up all blue sense that were outstanding on that. The, um, this is a special permit for a cell tower, which is good for a period of two years.
Um, Mr. Boucher, thanks for joining us. Would you mind, um, introducing yourself for the record?
Sure. Uh, nice to see everyone again. Uh, Greg Boucher from, uh, Saul Ewing on behalf of the applicant SBA Monarch Towers One LLC.
Okay, um, I'll, I'll turn this over to you if, if, or updates that you have for the board.
Um, I, I, I don't have any, any updates, except that I, I think that we resolved the two outstanding issues, which were the, um, whether or not there is any fees owed to the town, which I understand there are none. Um, that was cleared up. And then also that, uh, this little parcel, uh, by the condo development is still owned by Distinctive Acton Homes. And there's, uh, some language, uh, that Mr. Nezber is going to, uh, suggest to include in the renewal decision that we appreciate it if we could be renewed for another two years and we'll make sure to get back within the two years.
So just so I'm clear, uh, the ownership has not changed since the last special permit was issued?
No.
Yeah.
And then, uh, there is, again, there is pending question, and I believe you stated this, but just so I'm clear, there's pending questions on, um, maybe some, uh, invoices that were still unpaid, um, for, for, for this property for previous project work, but that has been cleared up and resolved?
Correct.
And currently there is no, no, no liens or, or tax arrears or any type of past invoices that are due to the town at this point?
No.
Okay. Um, any questions from the planning board on this item? Or comment? Um, Bill, what's, what's next? We need to do, the request is to re, um, redo the fact comment?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
After, you haven't had public hearing yet, as last.
We had public comment last time, but we will open back up.
Okay, uh, we're going to do public comment, but, uh, when the board is satisfied with public comment, um, we're going to find that the, um, criteria remains met by the special permit and that, uh, under the bylaws, the maximum the board is permitted to renew, uh, a wireless tower in two years. So we, we, we don't have the option to go along with.
I'll, I'll open up the public comments. Uh, if you're online, please use the raise hand feature. Uh, and, uh, we will call on everyone individually. Um, is there a public comment in this room? Um, and I'm not seeing any public comments online, Bill. Is that correct?
No comments online?
All right, um, then I'll make a motion to renew the special permit for a period of two years. Second? Any further discussion from board? All in favor, uh, since we're all here, doesn't, all, all in favor by hand, final? So it's five zero in favor of this special permit for the period.
I'll wrap this up, uh, shortly, Mr. Boucher, and we'll get it, uh, to you. And, uh, thank you for, um, working with us.
All right. Well, thank you very much and thank you everyone to the board as well.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Uh, next item, uh, Onar is here, uh, um, I'm sorry.
Um, did you want to make one?
Uh, motion that we, uh, close the public hearing on the, uh, one twenty nine Acton Street.
I'll second that.
All in favor by hand to close the hearing?
Ready for next one? Okay, uh, the next is a continuation of seventy six A Powder Mill Road. Um, this is a special permit application, uh, for, um, the existing bar dealership, but it would be a new ownership. I believe you, uh, met with Onar last, um, two weeks ago. And, uh, for the record, Chris and I visited the site and Julia, uh, last week. And, um, there was some supplemental materials requested that I, I, um, provided. Um, it was basically a sketch of the parking area, and there were some photos that we took as well, so I can pop those up if, if the board places.
Uh, you had to show the sketch and then the voting.
And, yeah. Onar, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
Okay, good. All right, and I'll share this as soon as we get it going, okay? Okay, and, uh, here's a sketch that Onar did based on, um, pulled out a little bit more.
If you can make it a little smaller, you'll, you'll see the whole thing.
There we go.
Perfect. Yes.
All right. Board, can you see that?
I can see that.
Okay. And, um,
Can you just orient the board, um, what the sketch is showing? I see powder on the top. Is that correct?
Oh, yes, we, or, yes.
If you find, Bill.
Sure, powder, sorry, Powder Mill Road, uh, right here, rivers here, uh, these are the, um, these are all, I believe, the, um, lots that are reserved for vehicles to, uh, for sale?
Yes. Yes.
And, uh, the, this demarcation in this location is where the current pavement ends, correct? The, at the McAdam?
Current pavement is like literally both ended, but I just like put a line over there, so I'm not planning to put any cars after that point, so I just like made it, made it clear on the sketch.
Okay. And, um, and then when I have some photos too, I could show you in a minute. Go for photos?
Sure.
All right. Right, and it's nice to have an ace photographer in the house.
Are you referring to your job?
Um, not exactly. Okay, um, let's see. All right, and, um, green chair, where is, oh, no. Okay. So this is big. All right, why is this so big? Got an idea how to make this one small, Chris. But note the brass.
There you go.
Yes, yes.
There's a few others.
I didn't know, wait. Only has two settings?
Um, so that's the same thing you're doing now? Because when you click on it, you can see that every.
No, I'm going to just escape. So.
Uh, Chris, was that thirty five feet from the, uh, from the water?
Um, I, uh, I, yes, I believe it is, and I can show you why. Um, this is a, well, that's good.
And we can use the toggle between the.
Yeah, how'd you make it smaller? I guess we don't need to then, okay, right, good, okay. Um.
Then we can use.
How'd you toggle on that one?
Yeah, and we can just toggle that one.
All right. All right, off this stage.
Yeah, so. That's that.
Good. Oh, how'd you make it bigger again?
You just click on the way it said it, I was quick on setting on the photo in a second.
And that's how it's done, Chris, okay?
So, uh, Onar, can you just, um, talk through what we're looking at here? This is the back of the parking lot, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And where is, where is the building in, in relation to this photo?
On this photo, the building is up front, so this is the back of the lot, so it's back of the building. We have about seven, seven cars, it will be parked on the back side, and the rest of the vehicles is going to be stored on the front side, and then a few of them on the side of the building. It's all in the sketch.
Uh, the four vehicles that I see here in a row, starting with the red vehicle on the right and the.
Yes, four vehicles, it's going to be like, it's going to be stored, it's shown in the picture, and then another three, right, um, right in front of, right, right in front of those four vehicles, it's going to be another three vehicles, so it won't be blocking anything, and plus, it's going to be on top of the paved area, so majority of the area on the back side, back of the building, is paved. Um, as I said, four vehicle, actually, right next to that Toyota truck, there'll be another one, it's comfortable if it's there. I can do five plus two or four plus three. So either way, it's going to be very comfortable parking on the back of the building.
So we're, for the board's understanding, we're, Onar proposing to park vehicles on the backside, or are those, essentially those vehicles there, particularly the four on the back? Um, that pavement in that area generally is in good condition. Um, so, well, outside of this photo, to the right, the pavement is in less good condition. Um, but that would be the driveway where Onar says that cars will come down and they're, based on his plan, there will be no parking um, on the pavement that's less good condition. So, again, where the cars are now filmed, that pavement is in good condition over there.
That's correct, Chris, so that, um, the pay, the payment area, right, there is nothing that, that, that good of a condition, so there won't be any park, parking, parked cars over there because it's going to be a driveway, so I don't want any cars blocking the other vehicles on the back of the building, so that place is going to be active driveway. Not, not for the vehicles, it's going to be parked, so majority of, ma- majority of the vehicles, it's going to be on top of the paved area. It's shown on the picture.
Chris, do we have a view that shows a little more to the left?
Um, Bill, can you toggle through those? Well, that's the same picture. So that's to the left of, right, so that same picture, it's still on the same photo? Yeah. Makes sense? Um, where you do that, already a red truck in the middle, um, vehicles would not be parked there, correct, Onar?
Yes. Correct.
What's the place with the demarcation, what was?
Um, Bill, how do we, how do we demarcate the back of the parking lot?
Well, uh, that was an issue that, um, conservation had, the way we did it last time. We put a, a pole or a, um, a, uh, a marker. And they felt that the, um, I guess at the time, that, that they, they, um, felt that the river was, you know, that there was a change in, uh, was going up and down at the time, it was not accurate.
Well, I think Bill Crenshaw's point is, how do we demarcate the parking lot so that we know where the last car to park? Can we, can we ask the applicant to just put a line?
Well, yeah, we, I mean, there's a, you know, if you just had a bollard there like that or something, just, you could paint the bollard red or something, you know.
Can we strike those four spaces? Putting up against the wall?
And can, right? Bill, can we ask the applicant to just mark out with paint four spaces?
Oh, just for, for the, for the final four?
Yeah.
Yeah, would that be all right with you, Onar, to mark this for, uh? Did you understand what the board is asking?
Yes, um, so actually, last time when I see you in, inside, or if you look at the picture, back of this red vehicle, red truck, right the, where the, right, right, the vehicle ends, there's, uh, there was a red, red, like, little, um, the signage or that kind of stuff on the right after the vehicle. So I was just, actually, you know what? This is a perfect example on this picture, right after this red vehicle. So this is where my parking spot starts, so anything after red, like, the rear bumper of this red truck, so anything from there to riverside, there won't be any vehicle in there. So we can, we can look at that that way, so this is red truck from rear bumper to riverside will be empty. So any of my parkings, so my, all my parkings after this red vehicle, where this red vehicle ends, it starts from this site.
Um, Onar, we're asking if, if we could just, um, put paint on the, uh, on the parking surface, just to show this?
Absolutely, absolutely, this is a problem, Harold.
Where would the board want the paint?
I think right at where the last star is being proposed.
But I mean, like a vertical, are you talking about like a vertical line on the pavement, or are you?
I would, those four spaces.
These four?
Go back to the other image. Oh.
Yes.
They got four, I read.
The, this is four?
So I would just strike those four stalls in our standard town mentions. Yeah. Leave it at that. And that would, because if we just scraped one line, it might fade away, but if you take four stalls and parts of it fade away, we'll figure it out. So I would just strike those four stalls.
So, uh, these are, what are, we're at nine, nine feet or whatever we are, nine and a half?
And if you go to the, um, overhead image, again, Bill, where are that at?
Yeah, there, there.
Yeah.
Oh, sketch?
Yeah.
Okay. Um.
Okay. Hold on. It would be.
Can you see that?
Yes.
Yeah.
So then it would be, the condition would be to stripe parking spaces thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three. Right?
Yes.
That would imply, you know, there anything, that those extra three spots could be anywhere close, you know, between the end of thirty-three and building.
All right. What do you, what do you think, Bill?
Makes sense. Is, is, is that good with you, Onar? Something you can do, if you stripe those, the board is just saying by indicating those three or four spots.
I can.
Okay, and we'll go, I, uh, the, I think they're, I'll get the exact, they're either nine and nine and a half feet wide. Is it nine? Okay, nine foot spots, and then no cars will park beyond that.
Nine, nine feet off from the riverside, from where the payment ends, the payment area ends.
No, the building.
No, for, right here, these, one, two, three, four, these will be nine foot spots.
Mm-hmm.
And that's it. We just need you to, to stripe those.
Ending at thirty-six feet off of the back of the building.
Ending at what?
Thirty-six feet, nine times four.
Oh, oh, yeah, okay, sorry, yes. So, uh, right, thirty-six feet total from the back of the building. And I'll just put that in the decision, and then that should, uh, that would take care of, uh, the board's concerns. Is that good with you?
Sounds good to me, yes.
Okay, and for timeframe, how long do you think you need to get that done?
Um, let's say by the end of this week, today's Tuesday, it should be all right.
Yeah, there's a, i- if the board, uh, uh, grants this, we still have, it's twenty days till it's ready to go. So you can have that to that, if it's, we just say before it's done, if you can do it by then, and you give me a call, we'll come out, and that would be great.
We'll, we'll just condition this for thirty days after the decision.
There, okay, thirty days after the decision.
Jim, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. On that, the picture there is, so Powder Mill Road doesn't show a sidewalk.
Um, that's correct. Uh, Onar, would you, would, you won't be parking any cars on the sidewalk, correct?
On the sidewalk, can you, uh, specify like where is the sidewalk? On the up front, like up front of the building?
Yeah.
No, the, all the parking, they chose one to twenty-seven, it's all inside the property, it's on the public area, at all.
And when I, when I drove by, Jim, or when I stopped by, um, they already had the front set up the way they wanted, which is just like this. The cars were off the sidewalk, clearly on, on their property.
Should we change the, uh, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna agree to this, because things in the drawing, to indicate that.
Yeah, Bill, that's a, that's a good point. We don't want it to, we want it to be clear that, um, we don't want this image to imply that parking is allowed on the sidewalk.
Oh, I, yeah, why don't we just put it as a condition? Why don't we just put it as one of the conditions, approval? No parking on the sidewalk, or would you rather have this just added?
Well, can we, can we refer to this drawing somehow, it's like not, yeah, not, not, yeah. You know what I'm saying? This is a reference, thank you, or whatever, not.
Yes. So, oh, truly, so.
Reference at a Powder Mill Road, right?
Oh, there you go. Because I would hope the.
So we're going to strike these four spots here.
Well, that's exactly it.
Okay, so that, we'll be up with that as a condition of approval.
What, what's the, uh, requested number of, maximum number of cars on site?
Um.
Onar, how many cars are you requesting as a maximum number?
I believe originally, when I, um, applied for a license, that was forty-five.
Um, uh, but I, I thought we discussed, and you said that the, the maximum number would be, I believe, thirty-six to thirty-seven on site.
Yes, usually on the, uh, back of the building, on the paved area, so it's, it's very possible to put additional six more car easily, but if that's the case, I don't have any complication, so just a one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven cars, they should be fine with me. I just don't have any complication with the, um, with the, with the other, like, code of compliance, all that kind of stuff, so seven cars for the behind, they should be all right with me. I'll have additional parking in some way anyway, so.
Essentially with this sketch, are we being asked to approve two customer spaces plus thirty-six car spaces plus that garage? Great. Open up thirty-seven cars by employees and for sale and through customer car, what we're being asked for?
I, I thought, Bill, we only, board only needs to consider total number of cars as part of the special permit. Is that right?
Um.
Do we need to?
I, I don't, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the last one we did, I don't, we didn't. We didn't limit any, uh, there was no.
You give like a max number, or you say, uh, numbers four, five, and six need to be customer? You guys kind of have a lot of flexibility here.
That sketch seems to be implying thirty-nine. If I count the customer cars and the.
Thirty-six?
The thing and the.
Thirty-eight, isn't it?
The.
We got one.
Two customer, it's going to be thirty-eight, yes, total, with two customer parking will be thirty-eight, that's correct, yes. And I can't put additional one car inside the garage, it's empty garage anyway, but, uh, let's keep it dry for now, for thirty-six, there should be the right number at the moment, and I'm, I'm fine with this.
And don't, are there, um, are you going to be doing work in that garage?
No, there won't be, that won't be any work, um, it's, it's a closed garage. It's just like open, open front garage, so almost like a, like, light detail sometimes, but that's about it. We don't do mechanical works here.
All these cars that are coming out have, have been repaired and ready to sell?
Yes, mostly, yes. We have mechanics and body shops all over the town, so we do, they do our works with the, like, kind of, um, contracts, so we don't do mechanical or body work at this site, we don't do that.
And as far as, as far as detailing the files, are you going to, do you tell them on, on the law?
No, we have contracts, but sometimes, hear me out, this way, sometimes, before the customer comes, like for some, some small stuff, we do like for very light, for a few minutes stuff, but we, we usually don't perform any work at this site, including detail, just some, some basic stuff, that's why you go, that's why your garage is there. But usually, it's just empty, but I can put a car or two inside, that's easy, but, uh, I didn't just print the sketch, I just put in the sketch, but takes about a car or two inside the garage.
What's your dumpster, or, I mean, how do you get rid of your debris in the back?
No, we don't, we don't have any dumpster here as well. We have like small trash for, for daily basis trashes, but we don't have dumpsters. We don't have a big dumpster, so.
Other questions or comments on the board?
Uh, to be clear, just to make sure, is the board saying that they want to cap it at thirty-eight cars? Okay, is that? Is that, um, thirty-eight spots, including the two customer?
So this is the entrance, is it, that way it is?
You got, Onar, okay, so we're going to do that, that's okay?
Yes.
It's the, it's the driveway part of this bike, not, or half of it, or how's that word?
What's that, I hear we said?
The driveway, the driveway part of the, of the business that we're talking about, I'm just trying to wrap the finer balls so that if we say you can't park in the driveway area.
We don't, we don't do any parking driveway area, this is actually driveway two businesses use, seventy-six and seventy-six A, which is my site. Both businesses use that driveway actively, and there won't be any car, so obviously, we'll be, we'll be blocking the whole business for both businesses, so driver will be, um, clear all the time, so. And it's about, it's about, it's about like a twenty, twenty-five feet driveway from where my car ends, and then there's like business, uh, line, it's about twenty, twenty-five, um, feet with, like, uh, the driveway is pretty, it's pretty big driveway for both businesses, and it's, it's usually clear.
My recommendation on that, just because, uh, it isn't clear in the, um, agreement between either line, like what the driveway is, that you guys maybe put in a requirement for a demarcation, um, it's just like, hey, this this is what we're calling driveway, you can't park cars in said driveway.
Logically, mm-hmm, I'm sorry.
I don't know that we can do that without the owners, um.
We can, that we can't park cars in the driveway.
That would be the way to do it. At a twenty-five foot, uh, or however wide that is.
Right, but is driveway easily understandable if the code enforcement officer.
Yeah, it's, it would, you wouldn't be able to afford something, what is driveway?
You can do it the way you want, I, I don't, I, um.
And we can do an. And we could do an offset from that building.
Well, right there, you, you, you see, starting at, I mean, if. From what, twenty feet?
We, we, or you can just keep general, say, you need to demarcate from, from twenty foot with driveway, um.
Yeah.
And then they can. They can decide on who's, on whose area that's gonna go in, if it's gonna go. Impede on this business or the other business. Um, you required a, a. A demarcation in the back?
Uh huh, no.
No, we haven't done that.
We, we require a striping response.
So, yeah, so striking a spot would be, this would be the same thing, it'd just be another stretch down the, down the middle.
Yeah, maybe something like twenty foot wide access driveway. Needs to be maintained, demarcated and maintained.
I, I, I agree in principle with that, but, but without, I don't wanna hold this up unnecessarily if he has, if he, and I don't know that owner can, um. Agree to that without the, uh.
I'm concerned because the other side of the driveway is now not on. The parcel that, or the prop, the part of property that we're talking about tonight.
That's true too.
So I don't wanna talk about the other seventy six, I wanna talk about seventy six A only.
Right, so the question is, if we don't say anything about demarcating and we say. The twenty foot driveway aisle must be maintained without any cars parked on it.
Uh, 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 beginning at twenty, well, if we know these are nine, if these are nine and a half foot by, what is it, uh, thirteen, or, or eighteen, I mean?
Eighteen, so, uh, you know, twenty foot offset from suddenly to that building.
Yeah.
Um, we've demarcated that line. Along the. I don't know the length of it.
And then the reality is.
Yeah, we've, we've, we've marked it, the edge of the driveway.
At least one edge, yeah.
Yeah, we just say that the, they can't park more than twenty feet.
From the building.
From the opposite of the building, that's it.
To allow for the driveway access.
Yeah. I think Bill's got it.
Yeah, okay, so, uh.
It's just a measurement for the building, twenty feet from the building.
Yeah.
And any other comments from board? So we have demarcation and parking spots in the back of. Um, can't park, you know, the twenty foot zone from the, would, would be the western side of the building.
Right, do you understand that one, um, owner? So, you just want, when you're striping, you're just, the board's concerned with that twenty feet, to make sure that there's a access driveway, good, okay?
Absolutely.
Any, um, any other comments from the board?
What about Jim's comment? Um. Should I just put, Jim, are you satisfied if I just put as a condition of approval, um, no parking? There shall be no parking on sidewalk?
Well, how do you define the sidewalk?
Hmm, I think our code officer can find that one.
That, that picture right there, there's no sidewalk.
Is it a code issue though? I mean, like, well, would it, isn't the code, I mean, still not allowed?
Or would you rather have, I'm sure owner can put a, a sidewalk, uh, uh, and send a revised on to.
If the sidewalk is considered a public right of way in this area, so, um, just like any other place, the police would be the, they can. Enforce blocking public.
Maybe you can just put a stamp on the sketch, here, it's a schematic drawing only, not just kind of like. Board, board, so.
What have you said?
Okay, Jim?
Powder Mill Road right of way includes the sidewalk and the road, so if you clarify that that's the Powder Mill Road right of way.
Okay. So if you revised sketch, just put Powder Mill Road right away.
Yeah.
Owner. That, is that good, Jim? Is that good?
Uh, I see the revised, yeah.
Okay, could you just, and, and send me a copy of that revised?
Can you, can you just connect with them offline?
Yeah, that one. Okay, so, but, but you understand in general what the board's asking for then?
So, is they asking me to like, uh, review, like review this kit and just put a sidewalk on, in front of the building, this. Where the one, two, one, one to fifth, sixth vehicle like starts, right, right in front of it, I just, they just want me to put a sidewalk there? It is where it is.
Um, so, Bill, Bill, we'll, we'll explain that later, uh, tomorrow or later this week, owner, it's a very simple change on the drawing, but Bill will explain it later. Um, I don't wanna. Back tonight on that point.
Okay, Powder Mill right away indicated on drawing.
I'll, I'll open this up for public comments, um, members that are joining us online, if you'd like to comment, please use the raise hand feature. Or activate your video and raise your hand and we'll call an individual one at a time. Um, is there a public comment in the room tonight? Okay. Um, and seeing no public comments online, uh, I'll turn it back to the board, have any, any last questions, comments from the board? Hearing none. I will make a motion, wait, Bill, how long, how long is the permit good for, does it?
Uh, yeah, this is up to the board, um, it was in perpetuity, the last one.
What would you rec, what, what staff recommendation?
The sta- staff recommendation would be in perpetuity, uh, as, um, long, um. As, uh, with the same condition that if it's assigned or transferred. Um. That the permit must be renewed, but not, uh, unreasonably withheld. So we, we, uh. You know, basically said that, uh, um, here's the, here's the permit, as long as owner is the, the owner. Uh, and, and in the event it is sold. Um, it will. Require a new hearing. But the, the board's not, you know, the, the general conditions are going to be the same.
Okay, and the conditions that we discussed. Are to strike the back four parking spots.
Mm hmm, at nine feet.
The, the condition of, uh, ours must be maintained within twenty feet of the building boundary on the west side of the building.
Which will be demarcated.
Um, to ensure that, uh, the drive aisle remains open.
Hmm.
That. Uh. Cars may not, may not actually park on, um, the public right of ways. Um. And that's, um.
Maximum number of cars?
In thirty eight, that's the maximum number of cars is at, at a thirty eight car total.
Including customers.
Including customers.
Yes.
And that's, is it, and then the, we listed as a condition that, uh, if. If owners get changes that, that this special permit will then be devoid?
Yes, I, well, the way, I worded it same way we did it last time.
Can you just word the condition and then I'll, I can make a review.
The condition would be, this special permit may not be assigned or transferred without approval by the planning board. Such approval shall not be unreasonably withheld. And what I would recommend, the, the difference is we say that such approval, uh, um. Without approval by the planning board at, as a public hearing item.
Um, is, any feedback on that condition, let's make them? Okay, so, hearing those conditions, I'll, I'll make a motion. To issue a special permit for, and allow use of a motor vehicle, vehicle sale at this. At seventy six Powder Mill Road in Maynard. With the conditions that were just set.
And I would, may I recommend, I would say, and the board also has found that the, uh, findings contained in the original. Special permit, uh, dated January twenty six, twenty sixteen, remain.
Um, and that, the, the other special term condition will remain at just that.
Nothing issues the findings, findings, yeah. So, you guys have met him, you wanted to, uh, the board?
Yeah, I did.
Yes, well.
Um, I see on this schematic, like, picture that.
Yeah.
You have customer parking. Um, in the middle of twenty eight and twenty nine. I think that the best way for you to let the customer know that there, it's a customer parking area, you can have some type of. Signage that says only customers can park here and not be parked in the back of the building by the river.
Bill, mark customer parking on the two spots.
What do you think, Bill?
I think it, 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 it would be a good idea for, um, to ensure that there's, it's there. Uh, it should be assumed that if this is part of the approval, but I think that makes, that takes it away, I think takes away any. That's good. Um, all right, we'll just mark, denote customer parking.
Okay.
Yes, I think you're right.
Um, and we'll, and to add to the condition, let's, uh, just got that, um, customer parking will be denoted with some type of designation or sign.
Okay.
Motion has been made.
And amended.
And amended.
One second.
Is further discussion from the board? All in favor of the motion with additions and amended as made of revision? Was that four or five? Four, oh, okay, so four to one for the approval of the strength of them.
Okay. All right, uh, owner, uh, Julia or I will be in touch with you tomorrow or, or Thursday about drawings.
Was it a no or it's? Some films in a no order, so, no, but, no, not a. Okay?
Yeah, all right, motion carries. Thank you, I'll be in touch.
I appreciate all you guys, thank you so much, here again, let's.
Bye.
Bye.
Okay.
Um, Bill, we had, um, a discussion with the tree committee at, I agree.
Right.
Uh, can you check the few committees available?
Danny was here a minute ago, uh, there is. Hi, Danny.
Hi, folks.
Hey, Danny, thanks for joining.
You're welcome. We have the tree committee and, um. We have, uh, MBTA communities and I don't have minutes.
Um, uh, Danny, just for the record first, can you just identify yourself and the, the other members that may, may be discussing tonight?
Absolutely, my name is Danny Schissler, I live at thirty Parker Street in Maynard, and I serve as vice chair of the tree committee. And I'm joined by, uh, our secretary, uh, Lee Eiler, Lee, do you wanna introduce yourself?
Oh, Lee, you're on. Oh.
Still muted, Lee.
There we go, sorry, Lee Eiler, Secretary of the Tree Committee, I live at thirty two Great Road in Maynard.
Thank you both, um, I'll, I'll give a, a, a big primer on this, the, the tree committee reached out and asked, they're, they're putting together. Um, a, 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 a town zoning bylaw change. And this would be referencing chapter twenty six of, of the, um, the bylaws, the town bylaws, not the zoning bylaws. Um, every, everyone, they're in that, so the town bylaws, which we don't control, not the zoning bylaws. Um, and they asked if we, if they could present to see if, um, the planning board could generally, um. See if they would support this, um, and, uh, as, as they make their way to town meeting this, this spring. Um, and I thought it'd be a good idea just to come in to see if we can give any feedback to the tree committee, um, Danny and Lee, did I get that correct?
Yes.
Absolutely, Chris, thank you, and, uh. If you'd like me to do my elevator pitch and share a little more info on it, I'm happy to do that, uh, just let me know.
Yeah, look, um, unless there's questions from the board?
I, I, Danny, I gave the board, um. I think everybody has a copy of the bylaw, right?
Um, yeah, so Danny, if you wanted to, uh, walk us through it and see what you've gotten.
Sure, yeah, absolutely, so. Uh, what is the tree bylaw? Well, the purpose of the tree bylaw is to protect, uh, preserve and nurture publicly owned trees, which belong to all of us here in town. Uh, the bylaw was developed by the tree committee with guidance from the tree warden, tree corps, the bylaw committee, town council and the select board. Uh, it was developed in accordance with, uh, Maynard's master plan goals, our community development principles and the provisions of Mass General Law, chapter eighty seven. Uh, which deals with shade trees. Um, the bylaw will help Maynard join, uh, a hundred and ten other municipalities throughout Massachusetts with local tree bylaws. Uh, including many of the surrounding towns. Uh, so why is it important for us to do this? Uh, I think we all know trees are extremely important for economic, uh, and environmental health of the town, uh, social well-being. Uh, and, uh, a, a healthy urban canopy beautifies Maynard, it helps us build resilience in the face of climate change. Uh, and there are just myriad reasons we should be protecting this important public resource. Um, I was stunned to find it out that Maynard has a canopy density of forty eight percent compared to sixty four percent enjoyed by the four neighboring towns. Uh, on average. Uh, currently, our town has pretty modest legal means to protect, uh, this, this important resource, so our bylaw aims to change that. By codifying and expanding the authority of the tree warden to oversee maintenance and care of publicly owned trees. Uh, it enables the formation of a tree committee to advocate for expansion and protection of the urban canopy and educate the public. Uh, it establishes performance standards for planting, maintenance, protection, removal and replacement of trees. And provides penalties for violating the standards. And critically, it allows us to apply for state funding, significant state funding to enhance our urban canopy through DCR's urban forestry program and other programs. Uh, which we're actually, uh, doing this year, so. Uh, who developed the bylaw, um, I already told you that, I, actually, that was a duplicate section in my, uh, notes here. Uh, so that's pretty much the pitch, we hope that you'll support, um, the bylaw, it will, um, appear on the. Uh, spring meeting warrant, and, uh, we're doing our best to get the word out and, and garner support and feedback, um, Lee, did I miss anything?
Sounds good.
Great.
Uh, I, I guess the only thing I would say is that this has been a, a, a multi-year effort. This is not something that we, uh, decided to focus on, um. This year, uh, it started a couple of years ago and, um, I think we didn't really get the picture at first. Uh, that, uh, we needed to follow, uh. State definitions, uh, provided by DCR and to really follow. Uh, sample bylaws that, uh, DCR offered for our review. And it was through Justin DiMarco that we got on the right pathway for this and have gotten to this point today.
Thank you both. Um, the. Oh, if it's okay, I'll turn it to the planning board to see if they have any questions, is that all right? Um, I had a, I had a couple, um, I'll start with. If, um, under section four. Uh, responsibility for the tree warden, uh, on section C. Um, not, item one, it, it says conducting public trade, uh, public, public shade tree hearing. Um, what's a public trade? Shade tree hearing, um, and who conducts those?
I can talk about the only one I know about, uh, the last few years in town, this is not a common occurrence, um. Uh, there was a resident on Grant Street. Uh, and there was a tree in front of her house, uh, in the strip. Uh, between the sidewalk and street, uh, it was a public shade tree by definition. And it was a healthy tree, but, uh, its roots were cracking the foundation of her house below ground. And, uh, so she wanted it removed. Um, there is a hearing process that, um, uh, is run, uh, through the tree warden's office. And public notice is given for this and an actual hearing happens usually right in front of the tree. Um, and it's determined, uh, whether the tree, uh, will stand or needs to come down. And in this case, uh, it was decided that the tree needed to come down, which I think was the appropriate outcome.
And, and so who is conducting the public hearing, is it the tree warden?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then the next, number two of that same section says conduct joint hearings with the planning board, do you have a sense of? What that would mean?
Um. We have, uh, designated scenic roads in town. Uh, there are four of them. One of them is not even at this point an accepted road, that's Puffer Road, um, in the very southern part of Maynard, but, um. Uh. Mass General Law deals with, uh, scenic roads. And, uh, under, under, uh, that. and, uh, under, under, uh, that law, um, uh, there are special provisions for protecting both trees and stone walls along scenic roads. And, uh, so, um, if there was, um, an effort to, uh, change something about trees and stone walls on a designated scenic road, uh, it would require a hearing, a public hearing. Uh, the other roads that are covered under that are, um, Summer Street from Concord to the Stow Line, um, Concord Street from Summer to the Acton Line, and, uh, both portions of Old Marlboro Road. These are all very, very old historic roads that, that run through Maynard, and it was at town meeting in nineteen seventy-five that, um, uh, the warrant article designating those four stretches of roads as scenic roads, uh, was passed at, um, at town meeting, and it was sponsored by, jointly by the Historical Commission and the Conservation Commission.
Actually, um, there was a follow-up, Bill Nimsor, I have not experienced a going public hearing like this.
No, I haven't.
Trying to get some of how that would work and what our responsibility would be.
Well, the scenic road is just, um, it's, is state statute. Uh, I've never done one, I'm gonna kind of a hearing with it, I, it would be coordinated through the tree warden. And, um, it's, um,
but it's not something that we, it's something that, that, that's a part of state general law that required the planning board to participate?
It's, I was unaware of it, but it did. Yeah, until I saw it.
Correct. You mean, I started one here, so, yes, the town's number four, state law, so this section is reiterating state law.
Okay.
It's already in place, the method is all set. This is just a, from what I believe I said it there.
But, but have we done, has the planning board done one before, Bill?
Yep.
You said you started it, did it never finish?
No, no, it, it, I wasn't on the planning board, I was the one who pointed out that they were cutting trees on a scenic road and they had to move the air.
So the planning board hearing though, not the tree warden, it's a di- it's a separate hearing, like a planning board hearing or?
The planning board with the tree. There you go. Which is I pumper down on the tree.
Or so long.
Or so long, yeah.
Okay.
Um, thank you, um, other planning board members have comments or questions?
I got a comment, boy. Point of old history, just, you know, that's why I'm here. Uh, when I first built my, my, first, built my first, oh, nineteen fifty-eight, we had a hard tree. And we actually grew small, small, up off of Chumby Street. And when they moved in, we moved a new house, built a new house, and they would offer public shade trees, be planted in their front yard, and they would plant them, boy. Old history, Chris, I was sort of.
What, what timeframe are we talking here?
Nineteen fifty-eight. I don't know if you haven't been born then, but never was.
I have a question about section five. Creating a formal town charter-based committee? Is what we currently have, this an ad hoc one?
Town, yeah, I didn't know that.
Okay, so my question then is, are we sure it's advantageous to have a charter-based committee rather than an ad hoc committee? Just because of the limitations of formal committee? I don't know, I, what, what's the thinking there of, of formalizing the committee? Because I just find charter committees to be a little constraining as to the ability of members to get stuff done.
Um, Danny and then Lee, did you hear and understand the question?
Uh, Lee, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we are a chartered committee now.
Um, I, 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 no, I, I, I don't think so, I think that's a town meeting. Uh, uh, Bill, this, this, um, came up, uh, when, uh, we went before the bylaw committee to review our bylaw, and, um, Bill Coleman, um, said that, uh, we were going to be a, you know, we're being put up for a charter committee, and this was totally news to the tree committee and to Justin DiMarco. And, and, uh, Bill's point was that, um, our, um, description of the, uh, duties and responsibilities of the tree committee, section five A, um, was not written, uh, um, in a way that made sense if you were a chartered committee. And, uh, when, uh, this draft went to Lisa Mead, Town Legal Counsel for review, she, um, tweaked that section five A even further, um, to make it the way she thought it needed to be. Uh, we have not actually, um, discussed in tree committee, um, the pros and cons, I, I guess maybe we don't know them. Um, but, uh, we thought, I guess you could say we thought we'd go with the flow, Danny, is that? Um, you want to say more?
Yeah, I, I don't think there's much more to say, Lee, um, thank you, thank you for that, um, I, I guess I will just add that the way that this is written, you know, the town may have a tree committee. Um, it, it doesn't behold the town too, too much here, uh, but I, I, I share at least that sentiment in that we don't necessarily understand the, the pros and cons of, of, of either, um, of type of committee, or certainly haven't discussed them, so if, if that's something that we should be, you know, more aware of, please, you know, let us know what you think the impacts would be.
Bill Krenshaw, if I could summarize your point, I think you were saying that, um, ad hoc committees have some flexibility that, um, charter committees do not.
Yes.
So.
Charter committees have to be very formal in their actions.
And so.
Adhocks, a little more flex.
And particularly with the public meetings and stuff like that, right?
Right, so like the three of us couldn't go out and plant a tree without posting a meeting. Because we're a real committee.
Yeah. So. So I, I, it, I, you know, I, I'm, I'm sure Julia and Bill can, can mid, can discuss this more, but I think, like, you know, if you're the, the formal committee, you're gonna have to post meeting minutes, you're gonna have to post.
We do.
All of that, that's all.
We do, we do do that. Already.
Good.
Um, the, the biggest thing we, from, yeah, the quorum thing is, is a huge one. Um, and also if you decide that you want to change the amount of members, um, that's something that we also see become a problem, like, if you decide you want to have, you know, eight members, if you all of a sudden have a ton of interest, you would have to go back to town meeting, um, where if your TA appointed you to go to Greg's. So, there's definitely pros and cons, maybe you can, um, discuss that with Justin.
Y- yes, and we, we did specifically discuss with Bill Coleman, um, and Justin DiMarco, uh, membership and the terms of membership and, uh, uh, as well as, you know, the fact that we do follow open meeting law and, and we are, um, uh, pretty rigid about posting notes, agendas, et cetera, so, um, you, those were, yeah, I, I would say two areas that we did put a lot of thought into, and there were quite a few edits that went into that section, so I think the committee is very comfortable with the language and, and the constraints in that section.
Yeah, just, um, a, a final, um, remark on that as well. Um, from the very beginning, um, Justin made it very clear to us that even though we were an ad hoc committee, appearances were very important, and that we should act like we were a formal chartered committee. Um, I think the only thing we, we, uh, aren't, uh, we haven't, uh, done is, um, I don't think we were required as an ad hoc committee to, uh, go through the state, um, conflict of interest training. Um, we did do the open meeting law training, yeah.
Lee, Lee, when I was sworn in, I had to do the conflict of interest training, so.
Oh, you did, okay.
I think that's part of.
I'm not remembering. Okay.
One other question, um, related to section three B. Um, and I understand, you know, the Mass General Law allows a tree warden, and we've always had one, we just said whoever's in charge of DPW is the tree warden, and so this seems like it's going to the good point of, well, the tree warden should know what they're doing. And they should be trained and experienced in arboriculture and licensed. And I'm not quite understanding what that license would involve and the skill level and, uh, frankly, the cost of hiring somebody with those skills.
Yeah, so, uh, there is a, uh, mass certified arborist, uh, certification that, um, you know, most practicing arborists, uh, have, uh, and you know, it's a pretty, um, basic credential for, for arborists in Massachusetts, and I don't think the town would want a tree warden that wasn't a, a certified arborist unless we were, you know, really in a pinch, I would say, but I, I, I don't think, you know, personally, from my perspective, and I, I do work in, uh, as head of operations in an arboretum. Um, this is not an onerous certification for an arborist to have, or, you know, a potential candidate for tree warden.
I think it's also a positive thing, um, Justin does go to the, um, mass certified arborist meetings, um, where there's obviously, um, education, education component and opportunities to share best practices and ideas and, uh, um, you know, it'd be wonderful, were, were we able to afford, um, a, a separate tree warden, but it's actually quite common in Massachusetts to have the, uh, head of DPW also be the tree warden. And it's a requirement of state law that a town over the size of what, Danny? Um, uh, I don't know, is it ten thousand?
I think.
Must, must, must have a tree warden?
Yes.
Is our current tree warden certified?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so that was my question too, that I know right now we are lucky to have Justin, who is a certified arborist, but, you know, moving forward, if we have a new DBW director who is not, who does not have those credentials, I'm just wondering what it's gonna look like, but it sounds like maybe it's a relatively common thing to hire a DPW director who is an arborist?
Um, our last DPW director, Aaron McClosko, um, was not a certified arborist, um, but he was our tree warden, and he went through the training, um, as our DPW director, um, to become a certified arborist. And he actually, uh, was the first to suggest to some of us tree huggers that we really should have a tree bylaw.
Okay, um, the only other questions I had was about section four E, coordination with town regulators. Um, I guess I'm just sort of that, I'm assuming, looks like if we have a application before us that will require a removal of public shade trees, it will just have an extra layer added on of the tree warden or the tree committee, right, uh, being involved in the hearing? That what we're talking about?
Yeah, so the tree warden specifically, and we would hope that the tree warden a- and/or the other regulatory body would, would ask for input from the tree committee, but yeah, the tree warden would be charged with, with, um, you know, providing, uh, or, or having responsibility of oversight, uh, and review of, of removal of those public shade trees or town trees.
And then my, we have a general question, which I'm sure the, is legal looked at it, it's fine, but within our existing bylaws, the definitions, there are a lot of definitions that I feel like we not have definitions for a person in our bylaws already, or is this?
They have to have.
Okay.
Because they're, um, it's going separately, like.
Okay, great, I was just checking, because, you know, there's gotta be a person somewhere in the bylaws, but I'm happy to put them in again, great.
So, put it again, I mean, no other bylaw brings in its own set of definitions that is that, that generic. But it's definitely going to apply to all bylaws, but.
They do get very. Oh, but usually the, there's, they, but went into separate bylaw, they do definitely.
Right, but the point is, they only do definitions that are unique to the bylaw.
Yes.
This has definitions that are not used in the bylaw.
Yeah.
And/or which are already defined by a law of the state.
Yeah.
And, by the way, a few that aren't referenced in the bylaw.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
It's a little heavy.
I, I circled person, public way, scenic road specification, just because I feel like, but again, if legal looked at it and is fine with it, then maybe I'm fine with it, it just feels like a lot.
I do agree with you.
The town is kind of weird.
That is weird.
I don't know, man.
Having our, the town, being the town of Maynard, it just feels like, you know, that's gotta be somewhere in our bylaws.
I gotta bend that to town.
Um, so to that point, were these definitions reviewed by legal counsel?
Yep.
Okay. Um, other comments, question? Not funny?
Is this gonna be a chapter in the town bylaws or a standalone?
Um, Lee and Danny, is this gonna be its own chapter in the town bylaws?
Uh, yeah, yeah, well, yes, that's how, um, uh, Bill Coleman set this up. It says to see if the town will vote to amend the town bylaws by adopting a new chapter forty-six, public shade trees as follows. And then, this is chapter forty-six, public shade trees.
The old chapter, please, it's.
I'm sorry?
It, it, I thought we, no, I'm just saying, just numbering, I'm not starting numbering all of our.
Well, I was the other, like, when I was in, going on these tree bylaws, like, we would, they would be separate, but like, your, my wetlands bylaws are chapter, they're with you, of the town bylaws, so I think we, in the town, just like.
We have to.
All of this. I was curious, uh, I think. The. Um, I know. I think legal.
Did you want to ask?
I know, um, I'm, I'm kind of curious, um, what happens if a resident wants to construct or say build a garage, and we have a tree there that can't be touched? Or, or taken down?
You have a hearing. You have a tree hearing. And it's the, and, um, people can speak up. Um, and then it's decided by the tree warden if it's a public shade tree.
That would only be if it was a, in a public way.
Right.
Yeah, or.
Yeah.
That, or on the boundary, and the likelihood of building a garage on the boundary is
Yeah.
not huge, right? That would be extenuating circumstances.
Yeah.
So this would not apply to trees, say, thirty feet back on some property, this?
No.
That, yeah. Okay.
I think you.
Um, other questions, comments from the board?
Yeah, it all makes sense to me, yeah. Um, this is one other, there are kind of complex ones here, but, you know, when we replace one of the dead trees downtown, that doesn't require a hearing, does it? Maybe it's always has and we never did it, maybe it's required by state law, we just never did it, so.
So, yeah, if a tree, if a tree is determined to be non-viable in the downtown area, what's, what's the procedure there to get that replaced?
The tree warden can just take it down if it's hazardous, if he just determines it's hazardous. Like, town liability issues. Like town liability issues. Trump. Lot of other things.
Yeah. And um, does this bylaw ensure that it gets replaced in a proper way?
No.
No?
No, but the tree committee tries to do that.
Is is there any, what were the rules then that ensure that trees get replaced properly in the in the public way? Are there any?
Not in our bylaw, uh, as Lee mentioned.
Condition it on all of our decisions now? Is that it? Yeah, okay.
Man, I I would, I hope there was more peace in this that would actually. Guaranteed or free canopy.
Um, I I assume, I presume the tree committees had discussions on how to. Help with the insurance that uh public tree. Public shade trees in the public way are replaced adequately. Um, do you have any advice on to the planning board on how we could help with with that effort? Because I think you have general support that. We want to ensure public trade, shade trees get replaced properly.
Yeah, so I. I I'd say we're. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Chair.
I was just, if you're not prepared, we can always, we can talk later about how to coordinate better.
I would suggest. For good, Mr. Chair, I mean, that's what would be a good project, uh and useful for both boards. Would be for the tree committees to develop recommendations for that, that we could incorporate into our uh landscaping regulations.
Yes, we are very interested in doing that. Um, we uh if some of you probably remember, we we did join for a meeting, I think over a year ago and. Talked about potential ways to coordinate with the planning board. Uh, the. Bylaw has taken a lot of bandwidth for us, so once we are able to pass this and move on to our. And next uh initiatives, uh working with planning board on on the regulations and improving those is is pretty high up in the list. So we really hope we can engage you on that. Um, and also on on projects as they come that will impact public shade trees.
And and I would just, I would just add um that. That this hasn't been the only big thing. Um, we have two, we've had now two CDEF grants. One we're about to implement. And another grant from a group called One Tree Planted. Um, and we've had trees. Uh donated uh to the to the committee that have been um. Uh approved as gifts by the select board and those have been the Arbor Day Tree Plantings at the junior high school, the high school. And uh last year in front of town hall. Um, so. We've had a lot of balls in the air and we are, um, I think. Proud of how much has been accomplished in the short time that the committee has been in existence. But there's obviously more to do.
Um, I would just reiterate that you guys are doing great and um thank you for all your support. Um, and I hope by no means my previous comment implied that uh you are not moving fast enough on any items. I'm just thinking towards the future. That's all.
Right. Good. Thank you.
Um, so Bill, this isn't a hearing, it's.
No.
There's no, there's no vote to be taken. Um. Is it appropriate if I write a letter? That generally describes that the board supports. What we discussed tonight, what.
I I might suggest it would be to do that, but I would take a a make sure to take a vote of all, I'll just say that we. And um, I think that would be the best way to do it, and that way it gives. It gives the tree committee uh a tool to work with to help forward this effort. And um, we've played our role.
So what's the motion then? Just to say that the. The board generally.
Make a motion to send a letter of support, but um.
Um, I'll make a motion to allow the chair to make a look, to write a letter of support for the proposed trees, public shade. Trees bylaw for chapter point six of. Uh to amend the town bylaws for the town of Maynard.
Forty six?
Forty six.
Hold second, Matt.
Thank you. Um, all in favor of the motion to.
May I ask a question before, I'm sorry, um, uh, this is Keith Gertler with O'Brien Commercial. Um, we sell a lot of properties in. And Maynard, and I just had one, one question uh real quick, if if I can.
Um. Bill, I'm sure, yeah, I'm fine taking a question if you allow it.
I I, okay, thank you. I was just wondering, so for properties that um. That are slated for for, you know, redevelopment or say that um something was on a um. A major road like, say Powder Mill or River, any one of the the streets um in Maynard, but it's a, if it's a public way, it's so every time. You would want to take down a tree that would be, that would have some shade onto a. A public road like Powder Mill, then you'd have to go to tree committee and um in order to to do that? That's just a question.
We're not, I what I think is best, Keith, since this isn't a hearing, um. And and generally, even during hearings, we we don't do Q and A's, we take public comments. What I, what I would say is I'm I'm happy to take your public comments. And then we can um, that can be, that can be part of what was, what was entered tonight and then.
It's not a comment, Bill, I'm just just a question. I I just trying to understand it.
Yeah, I I get it. What I would do is reach out to the tree committee and just write that question and perhaps they'll respond, um but the for the planning board tonight. Um, we're not, we're not gonna do Q and A's, the planning board is not um. Not not prepared to answer that type of question, so. Yeah, yeah, so it there's there's potential reasons here, but I think the best thing to do is write, write to either the. Um, the the tree committee or um town staff and um and Pat and they'll pass that along and hopefully get a response for you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Keith. Um, okay, so that's it. Um, thanks, Danny, thanks, Lee.
Thank you all.
Yeah.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Anyone need a break? Um, I do, so. I'll open up the here. I'll open up the public hearing for uh the Powder Mill Overly District, Sub District A. Um, I guess colloquially being known as the MBTA communities. Um, Bill, um, you want to give the board a primer on this?
Sure. Uh, I think uh everybody's uh familiar with a lot of the uh. A lot of this, but I'll give a little recap and um. This amendment is designed to forward two initiatives. Uh, the first is it is a uh component of the Powder Mill Overlay District. Which, as you know, has been in the process for over four years at this point. Uh, been recipient of, I think, five state grants to forward the. Uh initiative. The goal, um. The overall goals of the uh overlay district is recognizing that. Right now, we have um. Approximately a mile and a half of corridor along Powder Mill Road. That has a um hot pocket of zoning categories. And. Uh. The bad news with that is that if they all developed as they're right in most cases. Uh, we would end up with a a even further sprawl and uh. Disconnected corridor. So this initiative is intended to add new development. Uh, common. Um, and it's designed to. Ensure a level of consistency. Uh, in everything um from regarding um. Non-motorized vehicular connections, sidewalk and and bike paths if possible. Um. And uh to provide, it it it's sort of overly. Um. Uh, 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 to de-epicize the automobile where possible uh in new development. Uh, understanding that it's on or it's not gonna eliminate it by any stretch. Uh, also, um. The other, uh, another key component of this. Is uh. Allowing a degree of uh rehabilitation and utilization of the river, recognizing the hazard at that. So we know there's been a poor spot for. Everybody that's been uh. Uh, connected with this border one part or another, that this river has been neglected and um. There's a lot of potential and uh not all of it. Can be restored pristine, but where we can uh improve it. Uh, and allow for public uh access where appropriate. Aesthetic improvement where possible and um. Certainly to allow for a level of restoration. Uh, of native species and eradication of invasive and exotic. Species. Uh, but. Uh, the the big change that's happened with MB, with um Powder Mill corridor was the. Recognition that while there is a central um. Connecting feature, defining feature on the Powder Mill Corridor itself, there are. Uh, a number of sub-districts that made it. More practical after. Uh, four years really worth of outreach and community input. Uh, the ways that we could adjust the. Zoning overlays uh individually for certain districts. And because of that. Uh, we're looking at uh creating a series of sub-districts over the next. Uh, envision over the next year or so. Um, so. With that, they um. The first. That's the first part of the initiative. Second part of this effort is to address. Our um. What we call an MBTA. A community requirements, which is really a a section three A of uh chapter forty eight, master state law. And this requires that. An MBTA community. Uh, provide a certain. Designated area of um of higher density. For the the community. Um, why is Maynard an MBTA community? It's the first question that. Everybody would ask, and why is our zoning? Uh, we've been working towards higher density zoning in appropriate areas and we've been uh doing this, why are we? Why are we subjected? And uh the answer is, we were designated by the legislature as an MBTE adjacent community. And part of that was because we have a shuttle. Which. It it, I don't know. We have a shuttle, we're designated under the law and we we we, it's our obligation under. The statutes and uh the ship has sailed, whether we think it's fair or not, you know, but that's what we got. We, we have um submitted a preliminary plan. To meet our requirement. Uh, as mandated by the state, uh and it has been approved, that make. Our uh required area as uh MBTA, MBTA eligible. Community and we're required as a community to have. Uh, twenty-one acres. And at a minimum density of fifteen units per acre. Um, so to give you a kind of a. Idea, you know, it it. That's kind of like, I I guess the best. Example I could think of to point out, you know, I mean, where's a a freestanding, it would be like townhouse of a. Like a deer head would be or deer deer run. Your back. Your back, um, that would give you a good example. Um. This. Uh, in our case. Um, it's based on our overall unit count. Uh, current residential units that we have now in our land area. If we did not comply, a couple of things would happen. Um, first of all, we are obligated, um, we would forego our um. Ability to apply for state grants. These can be things that are very different, such as a math work grant, housing choice grant. This is, you're into millions of dollars. It it's catastrophic. It would be. Uh, the second thing is that the town could be subject to legal action from the uh state attorney general. Um, you you so a few communities, though they're very. Uh, right now, I think only one is actually. Not as stated, they're not gonna comply and is involved in legal action with the state. Uh, needless to say, uh, in Maynard's case, something it doesn't. It's not something we want to overweight and I can't see it outside at all. So, we try to kill two birds with one stone and I think uh this, the. Location that we've selected. Uh. As a um. Uh, we're gonna call uh. The uh sub-district A. Is the former Stratus property, which is the Beijing World Property Site, which is uh. Makes some no sense um for a number of reasons. First of all, it's greenfield at this point. Um, and uh, second of all, the owner um has uh. So we've been in contact with the owners and they're very supportive of the. Um, and um. It it makes sense overall for a community, where that type of development ultimately occur there. It would, it would make sense for the town um from a planning standpoint. And uh from a community needs standpoint. Uh. All of the uh Powder Mill overlays are optimal. Why is that important? It's important because we're not taking away anybody's property rights. It's just, it uh it it's a way for a property owner to. Um. Utilize the property in a way that may not be. Possible in the underlying zoning. Uh, and promote. Uh. Items that have been uh. Memorialized in the in the master plan or other documents that are overall in the town's spending. So this is a a critical. Uh, sub-district because of the um. Uh, MBTA communities element, and I think that it would be, um, I think it's a, we're in a good position all around. There's not a lot of downsides to this. Um, people have asked about, well. Who's gonna build this and what about the water and what about the utilities and so on? All good questions. But be clear. This has nothing to do with infrastructure capacity. Okay, this doesn't mean somebody can just build. Something there, anything. To the contrary of that is misinformation. Okay, it has to be. There there's a have to be utilities provided that are adequate. It's simply saying from a zoning standpoint, this parcel. Or these serious parcels. Are zoned where they can um meet the minimum capacity of the. The statute. Secondly. The town does not build housing. Okay, this is again, something we want to be careful about. We don't want that. Something like this, we don't want the information vacuum. Built with. The inaccurate uh information. It, this is strictly a private. Uh, issue. We're not talking about the town building anything. And lastly. There is no requirement that the town. Ensure that. That housing is built. Would we like it to be and consent to it? Of course. But. If nobody builds on it, we are not penalized. Okay, to be clear, we're not anyway in task with creating this. So uh with that, um.
Why we chose the parcel? Okay, uh, so they're currently zoned industrial, um, and so with uh, you know. Obviously, there was, you know, one idea of what was gonna go there, which is going to be. A pool, so we didn't really have to worry about that now that that's um kind of more up in the air. Uh, we had this requirement that we needed to uh from the state to to provide a zoning area for. Some more dense housing. Uh, we've also seen a decrease in the community's. Desire for industrial places. Um, so in this case, we were able to find a parcel. That, you know, at one time was a was a pretty large industrial base. Um, it also wasn't surrounded by. Residents, uh, so not only am I in our town, but as you go across uh the town line. It's it's the four corners, so it's a little bit active, a little bit of, a little bit of, a little bit of, um. We have a. A significant amount of residents that now are there. So if we were to get like a big factory to come in or something like that, um. a significant amount of residents that now are there. So if we were to get like a big factory to come in or something like that, um we I think would get a lot of pushback and this kind of seems to be moving in the trend that the town is you know, less um impactful uses on on properties and also help resident.
Yes, thank you. That's good. Um so in this case, uh the board, um we originally had, I think this has been through the board a couple of iterations. Um there's been uh there's been through legal at this point. Um this board, as you know, and this is more for the public. One. Uh but um and one in person.
Um people do watch our videos.
I know they do.
Yeah, I know they do. Okay, so this is for them. Um
this board is not is not voting to approve this article tonight in the Town Meeting Act. This board is voting whether to recommend approval of the item to the town meeting. And that is uh where we're at.
Uh Chris, shouldn't we have a an overlay map so that people could look at the area that we're talking about because it's very confusing.
Well, I can bring up the map from the um yeah, I have the map on there then on the uh I have a view.
Make sure you share.
Say what?
Make sure you share it.
So this is the new share here and uh
Well, that that drawing drawing doesn't have much context. Can you just bring up the assessor G I S database and just click on the particle?
Yeah.
We'll highlight it.
Right?
Uh we'll have the aerial baseball.
If you go to the mini town, it's
I want to open it up.
Yeah.
All right.
Cooperated.
I need a little button.
I have a bookmark.
Oh, well, you know.
But is it one oh nine Powder Mill is that or one oh? Zoom in and find it.
We have some some building plan to get better, don't we?
That's not it. Well, it's right next to it. Yeah.
So can you click the parcel that are in?
Hang on.
Oh, six four three five.
Yeah.
Three twenty one.
Let's get the uh
Fifty three, fifty four, fifty five.
There we are.
Twenty one, three cross.
Where do we make this into the uh?
I think you can just quick on here. I can do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they're highlighting now. Unfortunately, they're highlighting.
Yeah, I wanted to get it on the photo. This is this is this is um
The top corner?
Yeah, yeah.
And the local twenty one, twenty one area.
So these are the parcels here. That's no, that's uh yes, sorry. One, two, three, five, one. Not one, not two, three.
It doesn't let you learn.
Okay, so sixty five.
Right, sixty five, sixty four, three and twenty one.
Three.
There's a big one there and twenty one's across the paper road.
The other little corner next to sixty four.
Oh, there we go.
It is. The parcel is over there.
Wouldn't that help?
Well, it would help where you get it all together.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, we definitely need that for you.
This doesn't help. You want me to get a uh?
So what we can do is we can um attach a
Oh, sure. Yeah. But uh well, can you can you just explain to me where the access road is to this property currently? Access road uh right now is comes up along um here and dust like here. Right on here. And there's also this on um will probably end up ultimately being access to some of the parcels, depending on how it's lined up.
Because that's a public road that you're staying resting on now. It's a public road that you come in from.
Sudbury.
Through Acton.
Yes, Sudbury.
Yeah, all Sudbury.
On that side, even though the physical access is for us is through Powder Mill.
Although it's through a different parcel, so that doesn't apply to the gush very good. This zoning or spanderties concerned.
That's very rough. The idea too is that um at this point so we expect the access to come well encouraged.
All right, big point is this is some big parcels off on the corner that most people have probably never even seen or noticed.
And at one point it's
The only budding residential is
your head, your
your path.
Your path.
And some Acton, some of it.
Yeah.
And then we have um the West Concord apartment complex up up towards your top right.
I'm thinking of that. Yeah, that one then.
Press that.
Uh
Oh, rather down the road.
Yeah, so uh one thing we were, you know, keeping in mind, even though these are parcels or residents that are in different towns is is that connection point. So we're really looking at it at the parcels as a central connection point for a lot of residents from the other town to come down maybe potentially even through this property, depending on how it gets found, and down into, you know, just how it all works.
But our the goal of this is not that we're not here to to help develop parcel. We're just here to provide the overlay zoning to be compliant with MBTA
We encourage.
Section three A of the general law, general law.
That's right. Would it be too difficult to just go ahead and come up with a actual map of just the area that's gonna be the overlay district?
I think we
I mean, this is so
Yeah, I will.
complicated. You can't figure out what's what.
We'll make sure that that um that the the current EBS gets an ortho imagery overlay.
That'd be great. It would be specific if we have one available to show now.
I think we have one.
I think that would be the boards.
Let me see if I have one.
So while we work on that.
So Chris, just to fill on a point you said, um the way this is written is not yet simply to meet minimal compliance with the required state mandate, but it also provides a lot of flexibility to do a lot of things in this area, which I think is fine because this area is functionally independent from much of Maynard and all in many different ways. Could be a good thing and wouldn't really be detrimental to other elements of Maynard. But I think it's a two piece.
Jim, I hear you uh and I
I'll get it in one minute.
All right. Um, thank you, Bill. Yeah, I'm 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 following you.
Can I ask about a sentence?
Oh.
I just need someone to explain it to me. Seven point nine point seven point two applicability. The the second paragraph, which is sentences, a parcel may utilize either the PMOD or the underlying district. A single parcel may you may only use either the PMOD or the underlying district.
Yeah, you would only split parcel. Is the new elaborate.
What those sentences mean.
Well, if you i- i- if this land could be divided a number of different ways, it could be A and R, it could be, you know, there's different ways it could be. What we're saying is we don't want to have one parcel created.
Okay.
Okay, ones it it may not be these exact ones, it may be carved out of it. That utilizes the price of double dip, so to speak. So in other words, the parcels being developed will be either or.
Okay. Oh, so, okay.
Yeah, wha- uh what's the number of that, Natalie?
Nine point seven point two. Just I I just can't grab my head around it. A parcel may utilize either the PMOD or the underlying district period.
It's just up there, right?
Yeah.
And that and talk that, right? I think that that's just saying that an an owner can either choose to use the PMOD
Yep.
or the underlying district.
Right.
But not some weird combination of both.
Have industrial and residential on the same parcel.
Okay.
Have to choose which one you're gonna go by.
And that explains the second sentence, which is a single parcel may only use either the PMOD or the underlying district.
That's right.
Okay.
That's it.
I'm wondering if that should be clarified that we're talking uses because the paragraph above it says, you know, if it's not explained in the PMOD, you refer to the underlying for that back or whatever, all the detailed stuff.
So what would be, I mean, we could
I mean, your point is uses, right? You can't pick off the industrial use table and pick off the PMOD.
Right.
Use table on the same parcel.
That's right.
But you also don't want to allow different special permit um pathways.
Not there, right?
True, yeah, yeah.
So it's not just about use, I don't think. I think it's more than just use.
Yeah.
It's fine with this. I just needed.
No, good, no, it's quite a good question.
So I is but is that understanding the comments you defend, is it is it still written in a way that makes sense?
Yeah. Uh think about um a good example of this would be uh N B O D, an American crossing right now. Um, you know, um they've developed under the N B O D. Um i- i- if the the project's gone, now they couldn't all of a sudden decide, well, we want to put all this industrial stuff on it. It utilizes, no, right, right. Next door could. Right, the um one forty one.
Right.
The office building, yeah.
Cause that's a separate parcel.
Hmm, right, exactly.
Okay, that makes sense. You can keep that example in your back pocket.
It ain't Shakespeare.
Question about a sentence, well.
Yeah.
Nine, seven, four, three, bullet three.
Nine, seven, four, three, bullet.
Having a hard time understanding how that would be applied.
Hey.
Somebody has a project, we're reviewing the project and we have to say we can approve it because it meets that bullet.
Okay, so so let's see. This S P J is still okay, rolling review criteria. The proposed development will improve the functioning of the corridor by at least one of the following means. Okay, so first, provide a significant improvement. Okay, it's likely France to uh two is easy, improve increased views and access to the act passive river for general public. And we put this on the screen.
Thanks, Phil. I know it's a little cumbersome, but
No, no, it's a
Should be on the screen. Right here.
Thank you. The modeling stage.
This isn't the uh Oh, yeah. So, well. So other, I see what you're saying. Yeah. Other targeted improvements to the corridor as opportunities arise with new development. In other words, it's allowing a degree of flexibility for the planning board to incorporate their judgment in a special permit. So something we may not have thought of today. Um y- y- you can dictate the criteria, so we're not, it's not as uh unflexible as, say, some of the criteria we had, we've seen in other bylaws. If there's a better way to, you know, it's basically saying that we don't know what's gonna be there tomorrow or what type of uh what type of uh development may occur there and where we may get benefit from. Perhaps, for example, let's suppose there's a shuttle incorporated there that's part of this of of one of the campuses there or something like that. Maybe we would say, okay, we want it to improve um or, you know, uh the ability to accommodate mass transit stops on or something like that. And maybe something with a could be electrical charging.
Splash parkers.
Uh?
Splash park.
Splash park. Goodness, splash park.
Right, no, I I I agree with the objective. I just don't know that that wording gets there.
Well, it's an in, it's, I would consider that if we just reword it, I mean, we can reword it now without making a, it's not a um it's not gonna be a significant change. It's gonna, it's it's gonna be you know, consistent with what was we've advertised. I mean, if it's a question of um, if we can make it clear, let's add.
Um before we go any further, like you want to make sure we can go this on the screen for pro- for priority, for priority.
We're we're not the right place.
Um and then I I also want to make sure we can get the map up. Julie, I know you work on.
Oh, this is the
It's not what you wanted?
No, no. No, this is
Pulled up the last download.
I don't know, these are long, uh this is uh, all right, let's hang on.
Okay, then make sure you download it again.
Right, let's download that um this guy.
Bill, maybe, oh, you have it on file.
I can't get, for some reason, I can't get in the file. Okay, there's the downloading.
Cause we work off of our
It's going off.
Um so just just cut that to pressing. There you go. That's what I thought. I wasn't paying attention. You just can't edit it if you don't have anyone's um word um.
There, thank you. And um so let's go back to the previous comment, which was about section nine, seven, four, three. And I hate to be a pain. Can Bill Crenshaw, can you just reiterate what you're saying?
Oh, nine, four, three, so.
And Bill, can you highlight the third bullet of nine, four, nine, seven, four, three? Yeah, thank you.
All right, so that section is is outlining um things the planning board would have to find exist in order to provide approval. It could be any one of those. find exist in order to provide approval, it could be any one of those three bullet items, I just don't quite and I understand easily the first two bullet items. But I don't quite understand how it would would, uh, act on the third one, how we, we would interpret that language. And the discussion about the objective is other good stuff for the corridor. I like the objective, but I just don't know that that wording gets there legally.
Well, I think those, we should definitely write other good stuff for the corridor.
You know, yeah, I, I, we'll, let's, let's come up, let's, I mean, we could, now's the time, we can work some of it easy, or we can.
Can we say other targeted improvements?
I mean, the.
We could do other improvements to the power mill quarter that the planning board deems of substantial benefit to the community.
Something like that.
Something like that, but.
It, it seems like it's that, it's the parenthetical at the end of, which is opportunity to rise with new development, I think that what you're honing in on, Bill, right?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, like, yeah, that proves, yeah.
Yeah, so I think if, if we, if we tighten up that language to make it more definable of what we mean by that, I think that would help. And what was that? I heard, what, what was the, the example you gave or the?
Well, other targeted improvements to the corridor deemed by the planning board, or, or that provide substantial benefit to the community. I know, I mean, that's kind of language we use for the.
I think it's, yeah, that, as we said, um, to per- deemed by the planning board to provide substantial benefit to the community, that good? It mimics how we have the D O D language.
Yeah, which is great, but we can work with it.
Getting better. Um, and I wanna take more comments, but I do wanna get a map up to discuss, um. Yeah, you think it's good?
I'm done, I just.
Do you want it, could you sign into the meeting?
I didn't even, didn't think that, that one through.
I, it's funny, I can't get on the S rides today, I guess, cause I have a map in.
Are you logged in?
It doesn't, it doesn't even go, it just doesn't go.
Are you logged in on your bill number?
I don't know. I have a couple of small items that are, uh, um, much consequence, but in section nine, seven, four, number two, there are the words storm water, I think that should be one word. That storm water. Thank you.
Microsoft Word disagrees.
Microsoft Word does not have a background with storm. Where did you say that? Oh, it's wrong, there it is again. Outer mills, two words too. I think it should be, but isn't it?
It better be two, cause.
We're doing two. We're doing two. Yes, yeah, yeah. I thought, I thought. Cause I had the same thought, I was like, it can't be PMOD, it has to be P O D, but. Two words.
No, we got it. It's up.
Um. Okay, yeah, that's a good one, Chris, alright, bud. And then if we go to nine, seven, six, this is about describing the affordable housing requirements. Yeah, yeah, I, I didn't discuss that at all, um, so, okay, so let's, we'll pause, wait till we have a map up. And then, um, I'd like to discuss the power, the affordable housing. Yeah, the, the, I mean, I can start talking about that, and, I mean, for the powder mill, it, um.
Join our meetings very.
Uh, the, the, you want me to start or you want me to wait? I, I, I wanna see the map, I really do. Oh, I mean, I can reach on the affordable housing. I wanna, I just wanna slow down. Yeah, it'll, it'll, it'll just take a second.
Why can't I get into the meeting? You know what's happening? Telling me you need to enter the meeting password. Why does it, you should turn that off. If you have a waiting room, you don't need password.
No, it'll be out there. I believe you can give her, um, privileges for sharing.
Yep, the one. And then advanced, and then, um, office. And then you just need to stop share for that. So I made this really tough, so hopefully, um.
You know, good, thanks for doing it. Um, Phil, would you mind reducing the participants?
Yeah.
Thank you, Julia.
So I just quickly called it M B T A zoning map, we can change the name.
You should, can you zoom in just a little bit?
Yeah, so, um, and then I also just did a quick sketch, but I can make it so each parcel is like fully highlighted.
Yeah, so, I, let's, I'm just thinking of the record, I mean, if you could just, again, let's just fully describe what this is, um, I'm fine, Julia or Bill, I'm fine, I just wanna make sure, we're here now looking at a map, I just want for the record to show exactly what we're talking about.
So we're highlighting, uh, parts of sixty five, sixty four, three, and twenty one.
Okay, and can you zoom up a little bit and show for the record where the powder mill road is?
Powder mill road up here.
Okay, and, and regarding in town, there's the white buildings in front that are listed seventeen, one of those.
So that's the, um, storage unit, um, container.
Prime storage or?
I don't know, yeah, storage, yeah, business. So they, they were left out, um, sixty six is, um, also a, a separate, uh, business, but they were left out. Um, so we really focused on the parcels that this could actually be, um, that could actually be redeveloped.
For location, could you show the town line?
Yep, so the town line, it's kind of hard to see with the, um, ortho underlay, um, but it's right here, it's dotted black line here. And it's dotted all the way. And I can also make that so it's a little easier to see on the final map. Um, and then orange is our parcel.
So you're saying the orange delineated line is out of the overlay district?
So just the red is the overlay district that goes over, um, the parcel lines.
But not down powder mill road?
No, no. And we cut out sixteen, cause that's Wendy's.
Sorry.
We cut out, we didn't do, um, the reason why it's cut off up here and sixteen is cause number sixteen is the Wendy's.
Thank you, um, regarding divided parcel. Does that make sense to the board now? Any questions on the map?
And, uh, these were all parcels that were under the same, or that was the other reason, because we expect that, um. Certainly, we expect that development could be either, it could be, again, subdivided into many more parcels, or it could be, um, all add together and, and make one big parcel, it's market will decide, but there's many options.
Um, also, the, the town required us to have a certain size, right, in this, you said that?
Yes.
Yeah, so, for example, we had to, you couldn't pick one parcel, so, um, uh, one that, that always came up with like, why aren't we doing the mill, um, the mill's one parcel. So although it could be fifteen units per acre, um, you needed at least, they had some weird requirements on how many, uh, the minimum amount of parcels you had to choose.
Uh, maybe four.
It has a certain acreage too, right?
Yeah, we, we, right, we're gonna do the.
It's about thirty seven acres.
The, the mill or this?
The overlay.
Yeah, this is thirty seven acres approximately, right. And what was our requirement for M B T A community? Twenty one. So, okay, so it's clearly over the twenty one.
Yeah.
Um, was there some combination that would get us to twenty one here, or was it that all, all parcels are needed to get above twenty one? Yes, uh, be particularly when we take into account, um, uh, well, this structure, notwithstanding, cause it doesn't have to, it don't have to, but, uh, wetlands set bound, roads, anticipated. Um, of Bulgaria, it's these sort of thing.
So for example, if we cut out twenty one, we would have cut out the, the, um, frontage, uh, so we, we didn't wanna do that, and then, um, you can't cut a parcel, so it was just, we, we kind of, it was a happenstance that we were able to get above.
The nature of my question is that all parcels that are being shown here are required for compliance to meet the, yes, okay.
Yeah, yeah, we couldn't cut anything out without having to add another.
Julie, will you just clear this up for me, cause I, I'm so confused.
Okay.
We're talking about the powder mill overlay district, which is only the delineated line in red.
So we're talking about the M B P A overlay district. Yes.
Okay, we're not talking about anything on powder mill road.
Nope, nope, later on.
Later on.
Later on.
Yeah, the only thing that surprised it is, it just so happens that, um, we were doing the powder mill overlay district before. Um, and we ended up doing sub-district within that, and so M B T A came along and we were like, well, instead of just having an M B T A district, we could make that one of our sub-districts that would, um, coincide with the powder mill quarter.
So this will be on the spring, I mean.
Correct.
And the powder mill road area.
Yeah.
Will be on the fall.
Hopefully, yeah, yeah, so well, um, this is one of the sub-districts, and hopefully in, in the next few months, we'll come back to you with the other sub-districts that are actually on powder mill road, uh, which go.
Not for the, not until the, uh, uh.
Fall.
Fall at least.
Yeah.
Okay, right. Um, Jim, one reason why staff advised to bring this portion only now is that if we waited to the fall, we would, we, we may risk compliance with the state.
I, I'm aware of that, yeah, sorry, I understand.
Yeah, yeah, makes sense?
Yeah, it does.
Okay, did that help? And the other area is our account, we're, we're required to have a minimum, uh, account for, um, four hundred and, um, I'm not looking, four hundred and seventy four units based on our forty seven hundred units in town. Cutting out any of the parcels? We couldn't make it. Thank you. Um, there's a double lined here, could you just point that out, Julia, the, the double orange line? That runs through is, is that a, what is that representing?
Um, so that is a paper right of way. Um, so meaning that it could become a public right of way, it could become a road, um, and it's currently not used. It's actually a path right now, um, so, uh, a lot of people in your path use, um, number three is, is mainly uh, maybe like a little bit of a parking lot, but mainly woods, there's a lot of trails and paths in there, um, so, uh, when we have, you'll see this on our, our assessing map, like, all over town. Um, when people came in to make, start cutting up and making developments, um, they had some ideas of where they wanted streets to go and, um, and, you know, surveyed them and, and re-assess them, and then ended up not doing the, the rest of them.
Jim, Jim, do you have any good stories about that, uh, right away there?
Well, it's a county road, old county road, used to be a horse front, uh, line. And there was a real connection between, uh, Walton Street and, uh, the back area behind Spat. Uh, it's been, uh, there's been two or three people over the years uh, wanting to develop that, but they could never get permission from the county to, to any work on it. So, but that will bring up for now, I have no idea. Maybe it's a different environment now.
Yeah, so it, it is an interesting area for us, it doesn't, um, doesn't affect the M B T A zoning district, but when hopefully this area gets developed, um, we'll be able to clean that up a little bit. Um, and get, get some more definition on it, but a lot of these oldest testing, uh, maps that the, our D I S is based off of don't have that information, you can't click on that and get it, so. It just, I'm just gonna bring you a map and just have you go down every paper road.
You mentioned that you considered the mill as an option.
Yeah.
But for various reasons, it would not be a compliance, uh, overlay district.
Yeah, it's too small. Oh, there was also a, there's a.
There was a single parcel issue.
And then there was a, um, there's a restricting development agreement on it, certainly, um, that only allowed for one veteran unit, um, and so that was, uh, one of the big things with M B T A is that they don't wanna see any restriction. Um, through their zoning, so that means like no age restrictions, no amount of veteran restriction, um, so that the A was the main reason why that area.
It's also insufficient area.
And it's in, in, yeah, it, it kind of ticked a lot of boxes, but we did consider it.
Okay. What other areas did, did we consider generally, Peter?
Downtown overlay district. Downtown overlay districts.
We did, we tried it, that was, yeah, we tried.
That one, uh, was, that one, um, they put back on mainly because our mixed use requirement.
And capping it at six units by right.
Yeah.
So we, we, we went to the, we went to the state and proposed the D O E downtown overlay district and it, and it got refused. We would have to, to make a compliant, we would have had to get rid of the restrict, right now. We, you can build up to six units by right in the downtown overlay district. But we would have had to remove that, and I, I, it's going so well, I, it just doesn't seem.
I would also point out that we would also lose a lot of affordable housing units.
Yeah, well, that, we didn't.
We require up to twenty five percent.
Right.
But the state.
Thirty.
Can't do that.
Right.
Thirty. You can only require ten.
Right.
So if we put it in downtown, that means more houses, more apartments, but fewer of them are affordable.
So what we were dealing with is when this first came out, the state also was kind of working through what this would look like as well. Um, so we were kind of both chasing each other, so they would come back and say, like, for example, we submitted the mail, and they were like, no, on these things. Okay, go back to your I board, and then they would come out with new clarifying language on the zoning requirement. Um, and then we would bring them, uh, an idea, and they would be like, no, and then they would come out, more clarifying language. And so we saw the definitions definitely ebb and flow, um, so we thought it was easier just to start fresh than try to take one of our existing districts, um, and, and try to modify it and potentially lose, like Bill was saying, lose, um, some, some great assets of our overlay districts.
So the nature of my question is, um, I, I wanna ensure that we looked throughout the town at different options and that, that this was the option presented as the most advantageous to the town.
Yes.
Are, are there other, was there any other area that could potentially meet the requirements that we considered? Not that are contiguous, so they don't have to be.
It's also realistic, that was really important to us too, is that at the end of the day, yes, maybe M B T A zoning has some issues with it. But, you know, they're, they're, they really wanna see, um, us do this zoning to try to encourage more dense, affordable housing. Um, and so, you know, this, these parcels have actual development, uh, potential and are in that, that kind of situation right now. We could take some, some other parcels, maybe that already have existing homes on them, and we just, and, you know, re, rezone them. But what's the reality of those being redeveloped into fifteen units per acre? Um, it's low, and so we, we see different towns kind of approach this differently, we wanted to respect the intent of the M B T A while also, um, you know, making it an area that works for the town.
And by respecting the intent, does that increase our likelihood of the state considering this compliant?
Yes.
And so if we potentially threw it someplace else on a, on a R one residential or whatever we have, an S one residential, that, that could, there could be considerations that the state may, it would lower the, the likelihood that we would, could get compliance?
Yeah, and that's what we kind of, uh, have heard from, so obviously, we're, we're working with M A P C, our, uh, Metropolitan Regional Planning Council, and they work with many towns to help facilitate this. And that's, you know, what we've heard is that other towns come in and are like, oh, we'll just kind of slap it over here and, and put it in the corner. And the state's like, you know, pushing far back, so, um, so far, our, it's been approved and. And the state's like, you know, pushing far back. So um so far, our it's been approved and and every. The state is good with this area um and likes the idea of it being realistically developed.
And you mentioned that it's advantageous for other reasons, um that it that it meets the intent. Is it staff's opinion that this support the master plan goals?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm 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 presuming specifically about housing?
Yes.
Okay.
And housing production plan.
And housing production plan.
And there's a medical plan, yeah. The the town, I mean, that that we didn't get into the portal with the town is a critical. Culture of its own with our 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 senior population in particular, but also our uh is the rest of the Commonwealth, you know. There's a a an old stage um shortage of housing to the point of where. There's danger of outmigration for the the metropolitan area in particular, uh so this is a concern.
The only goal, like, so the master plan was we're in with this area being. Um, so obviously.
Well, campus, it was a campus.
Yeah.
So we anticipated. Right, yeah.
It's okay. Um, so that's the, that's kind of the only areas that in the ma- when the master plan was being written, there was one kind of vision for this. And obviously, that's changed, but we still feel like it it follows the intent of the master plan as a whole.
So we're clear. This would, this is a overlay district which would then have to follow the. Section nine seven of the bylaws that were being proposed. But an apple or an owner could still choose to do the base.
Still choose to do it.
Right, um regardless of. And we would still be me be compliant regardless of whether they chose base or the overlay zoning, right? And so if they, but if they chose the base zoning, there would still be, you know, the the considerations, the same considerations. They'll take it this way. You have overlay zoning and you have base zoning. Both of those would still have the same considerations for stormwater management. Um adequacy of utilities, um, you know, traffic and potential special permits, right? So in some sense, the the impact of development is is basically. The same for both, or the considerations will be the same for both types of development, whether it's base zoning or overlay zoning.
Well, the considerations would be, right, the impact, you know, it may be like in this case, you know. Where you're you're having a higher density level. It it might be overall less in in a lot of ways.
Because of more density.
Because of more density, so it it may be that um. There's uh, for example. Uh the the we've talked about the industrial uses and and the master plan actually. Two master plans ago. Started that that they want to de-emphasize. Industrial uses in Mater. There was a, you know, the people don't always remember Jim knows. But 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 the Mater Cross then, at one point, right, was gonna be. It was before digital, what was there?
Uh, before digital. Ah, wow. Actually, before digital was all broken up into uh different little sectors all over. Before that was a tech combo.
Okay, so the industrial uses, yeah, yeah. And and um so. Uh we, I think in general for the community, that would be a less desirable impact than having. A a planned development like this.
For this proposed zoning overlay district. Would we have more or less, would the town and the planning board have more or less input? Um regarding things like stormwater and things like um conservation, things of that.
So for stormwater, um, you have to get a stormwater permit if you um redevelop the site. Um, our threshold is ten thousand square feet. Uh, used to be an acre, we moved it down. Um, so you would have to come um in front of conservation for stormwater permit. Um, there's also a tiny stormwater uh area up here. Um, that is now developed into its own little wetland. So there is some like buffer zones, they would have to go through preparation with that. Um, as for, you know, your jurisdiction. It would, it would be one of those um kind of ones that we would both look at. Um, where conservation and planning, we work together to ensure that we. Um, had a good plan um from a stormwater perspective, but yeah, they um where your your power kind of reduces is the fifteen. Minimum fifteen unit. Um, by right. So if you um. The by right aspect. There are certain aspects, like we couldn't put, we can't have them come to you for certain special permits.
Really can, they can, you can't come for special permits on the uh. The zoning for uh seventeen. Um seventeen years break or under.
Yeah.
They would come for site plan.
Yes.
And that's where all this would be hurt. The 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 it, the discretionary permit would be removed from that part. We, this legislation proposes that if you were to go.
I'm I'm just trying to make sure that we're not generally losing influence by by the proposal. Besides the compliance points by MBPA.
Intent is that it would, if you had a developer come in, that they could come in and easily build. Residential units in a denser fashion.
But they would still need to come through the planning board.
Uh, so like right now, I mean, they can't, it's industrial.
Um, so I'll stop asking questions. Um. Uh, I do want to talk, I would like a briefing on the affordable housing requirements on that. Um, but if there's any any other board questions, Tom, before we do that.
Later on the.
Okay, okay.
If you want to have input on. What the map looks like, like how you would like that to be drawn, um you can email me and and we can finalize that.
Yeah. I think what I think what the planning board wanted was just to make sure that it was shown and presented and we understood it.
But it's a really good point that for for town meeting, um the ortho imagery does give a lot more context of where you are, so.
Don't call out names, like streets and Wendy's.
Yeah, yeah, so I think.
Air path.
I think I could make it a little more um.
You've done the same other bylaw. So, yeah, Bill, um, can you just run us through the affordable housing requirements?
Yeah, this is kind of a bit of the irony of this whole thing.
Yes, if you mind, I'm putting it up on this.
Uh, this board, uh, we worked, uh, remember when they um. Path course to create an inclusionary zoning bylaw to meet. Uh, the, at the time, unmet needs of our, I'm considered, we were down. Our affordable housing was about three and point eight percent, I believe. When we enacted the um inclusionary zoning bylaw. To mandate the include the uh provision of affordable housing, the new development, we're now up to nine, I think nine point four percent. Our um, as Bill Cronshaw noted earlier, um. We have requirements in our inclusionary zoning uh bylaw that can require up to thirty percent, in some cases. Dedication of affordable units. The MBTA zoning limits. Uh, the um. Amounting affordable housing to ten percent. And without an exemption, you may not exceed ten percent. That was unfortunate because we'd all worked very hard and a lot of people in this town did work. Very hard to get that inclusionary zoning up to that level. And then ratchet it back down, but again, that's the hand we dealt. And uh, the one recourse we have is um petition, the the state, which I have. To up to twenty percent based on their fiscal analysis, which I've uh requested. I wrote a grant and received it to fund it. The analysis and but we don't have the answer. And uh yet, if we will qualify up to twenty percent, we probably will fall in somewhere at fifteen percent. And um. Bye, thank you. Fifteen percent uh is probably where I see us landing, but it will be up to state. So I didn't, we didn't have to go back. If the state runs late, as they anticipate they're going to, we we asked for some time ago. Um, we've left a level of flexibility in in nine point seven six where. The minimum we're going to uh requires ten percent, which is what the state requires. And I will try for the maximum, which is twenty percent, understanding that the state may say, the state may say, you can only do fifteen percent.
I don't understand.
Because they think that by requiring too many, you're making it financially unaffordable for it to be developed at all. And no housing will be achieved.
But will they look at the fact that we already are doing this?
They don't care.
I.
In other parts of town and development is happening.
I have to. Talk myself blue. Uh, I have done the best I can name this.
Yeah.
I I I.
I know, but.
Yeah, they're not. They're not thinking.
It it it's one size fits all.
And so I can summarize it very briefly. We would, the town, and I think the planning board has shown us, um, the board in the path would. Would prefer twenty percents for the affordable housing number. But the states, this compliance point only allows up to order to be ten percent.
Without an exemption.
And we are, we are pursuing an exemption.
Yes.
And that that is pending.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Um, one thing I would point out with the text, there was a discussion of. If they give us fifteen, that's better than ten, so we take it. The way the text is written, we wouldn't allow ourselves to do so.
Because it only says reduce either ten or twenty to the option that is the way.
Say again, ten or twenty, let's fix it. What what do you see, Bill?
On uh. Uh, I guess it's the second thing. If the town has not received said approval, which is twenty percent, requirement shall be reduced to ten percent. Doesn't say anything about fifteen.
Could be changed to like.
I think I got this ready. The requirement shall be reduced to the highest amount. Uh allowed by.
Yeah.
The Commonwealth or ten percent and it will defer to which one's greater.
Yeah, great. That's a good good catch.
That's why, that's why we are here, Bill.
I I weep with gratitude daily.
And if you go down a little bit further, it talks about the the sort of process of rounding down numbers and making them whole numbers to do the calculation. Is that, is that the MBTA compliance point or or is that?
That's from our um.
That consistent with the D O D language?
It's our inclusionary zone.
Okay, so that's consistent with our inclusionary zone.
Not a hundred percent sure it is, but.
Wait a minute, which one, yeah, rounded down.
So it says any fraction of a unit shall be rounded down to the next.
When even point nine nine goes down to zero, what we're saying.
Wait, and it purposely calculated number for all requirement.
Now, in this case, it might actually be useful because we usually accept small units. So, you know, if we did that five, we don't require an affordable unit. And by rounding down, that language would be maintained or that intent would be.
Yeah, and there's a larger point there, I think, too, is that there, this is not designed for a four unit development. So I don't think, I don't think a round down is really impactful. Because I think we're talking probably multi, 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 right? Yeah.
We're allowing all sorts of possibilities.
Yeah, it's designed to be a little creative with that.
Um, all right. Other questions on affordable housing?
Yeah, that's a really good catch on nine seven six you got, that is good.
Yeah.
Where's that?
The second last sentence, just say eighty percent of the AMI.
You have some comments?
Yeah, could we look at the nine, seven, eight table?
Yeah.
Or just, I like the two-part table, we can start right there for the moment. Um, so. It's a dimensional requirement and the underlying industrial zone has its own dimensional requirements. And these are new ones specifically to. This PMOD subdistrict A.
Yes.
But. When we say maximum minimum yard requirements, we'd say it's only applicable to multifamily and mixed use in the PMOD. Does that mean for every other use possible, it reverts down to the whatever those. Numbers are for the industrial district? I just don't understand why we're referencing.
I I see, I see your point. Well, okay, you know what? I I do see your point. I think what the, when we wrote that. It was mixed use, meaning that there's going to be other mix of uses, but it could be totally confusing. So I think we should reword that. I just lost it, but wherever it was.
I don't think they're all a lot different, but just seems weird that we're. Only picking a subsection of the possible things that could come out of the MOD.
And other, and.
I think another question sort of occurred is what would be the default otherwise, right?
Right, I'm just saying, it's like, okay, they they built a hotel, right? Okay, what what's the number? Where do we find the number? And I guess we find it in the industrial.
Well, in in that case, yeah, it it if you went by um. No. No, that that was, the intent was a mix, the intent was that you're not gonna have a. You 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 may have one hundred percent. Multifamily project. But if you're having other uses.
You know, I I think we should strike the reference to multifamily mixed use, especially. Eventually, it will apply to all subdistricts, and I don't think you want to get.
It might not, yeah, but it might not, but I I think you're, I think we should strike for multifamily mixed use. But see, I, that's why I left PMOD B and C. So I don't know what what the board's gonna come up with. If we, I have some.
I split it out further.
We might, yeah, we might. But so does the board agree with that if I strike um for multifamily mixed use? For the yard requirements?
Yeah, I don't know what the, I don't know what the other options are for versus, for say, a hotel. I mean. I don't, I haven't looked at the industrial.
Cocktail lounge.
Right.
We're, we're not trying to close this tonight, are we?
Yeah.
For for.
Call it, it's a recommendation, yeah. We're not, in other words, I don't want to open this.
We don't have a, we don't have a timeline on this hearing, do we?
Do we?
Article's in, right?
Well.
What I'm saying. Or is the draft article?
The draft article's in.
My my question is, do we need to close tonight so that this can be on the the town meeting warrant?
If we want to have our changes incorporated, I would say we do. Our recommended changes.
Okay.
And I can't, I mean, yeah, I I don't know what kind of input we would, you know, what more at at this, for this.
I was just saying, thinking if we just needed to do a little more homework on that one item.
When's the warrant go to print?
I don't know exactly, I don't have it in front of me. But um, it's a um.
So if we can, if we can, if the board agrees to that change, that's fine. Um, I just, you know, I'm trying to get some. But I don't think we do, I'm.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to make sure we we do.
Um, did you get the list? I've got it in my office. I'll go pull a a hard copy of it. I don't think it's posted.
Um, let's table that one item. Um, Bill, you had another.
Yeah, in in the same table, um, same kind of question, uh, under minimal lot requirements. The lot area. In subdistrict A, I was talking about.
Right.
Only references requirement for residential unit.
That's right.
So, once again, if it's a non-residential use, that just reverts to whatever that lot area requirement is in the industrial. Is that what we're saying?
We're saying that it is regulated by. Uh, in in that case, it's regulated by the other dimensional requirements, so we we have a um. In this case, there's a maximum. Um, with the the open space has to be maintained in all of these, which is twenty-five percent. And put uh, we're saying that it would be subject to the height requirement. But the size requirement, um, no, so in the end. Twenty-five, you know, it it's looking for the twenty-five percent open space to be maintained. And for um, calculating residential density, we reverted back to fifteen hundred, which is the DOD.
But forget about any of that.
Well.
So.
Yeah.
I'm going to my use table, I'm like, ah, I gotta add a right brewery.
Right.
What, and I want to put it on parcel this big, this table, can I do it? Planning board, what does planning board find and say, oh, that the size has to be X. Where where do we get that?
So a brewery, so it's a brewery, if you're in something of that size, and it was not in the use table.
We we go to the underlying.
You would go, but then then you're, then that's going to be your project on that parcel. You're not gonna go back and say, I want to put something from the PMOD.
What the number is. How do we find the number? Is the number ten thousand, thirty thousand, forty thousand?
Well, it would be uh, in the underlying, underlying district, which I believe is forty-five percent.
Okay, so the intent for that one particular dimensional item in sub district A is. We define a special one for residential and we default to the industrial underlay for everything else. That's our intent.
If you're saying um. You would default to that if that is the use of that particle. But I'm saying if you're picking and choosing from the industrial. And saying, here's a use that's not allowed in the in the overlay district. And I want to put my brewery here on the same parcel, but I want to put, I also want to be able to put residential units which are not allowed. In industrial, you're not gonna do it. Well, that's. Right, okay.
Good on the residential.
So, yeah.
I have a commercial use that's not currently allowed industrial, that's being allowed PMOD. And I want to know what the minimum parcel size I can put in.
That that's not specified. And it, what's specified is that the. Uh, of this developable.
So we have no minimum parcel size for non-residential uses in the PMOD.
We do not.
You're saying.
Yeah, I see brewery with ancillary food service. Is PMOD, is a yes?
That's correct.
Just allowed.
That's correct.
The question is, if I want to build a brewery, what is my? Area?
No, I'm saying that you're you're, if you're developing under the PMOD and you're developing commercial. You, it it's not dictating the size of your commercial. It's dictating the amount of open space that is maintained. So in this case, twenty-five percent.
It's twenty-five percent.
Of the parcel.
What side of the bar?
Doesn't matter.
Whatever.
Why does it matter?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be seventy-five percent.
That's right.
And 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 uh still requiring that back.
Right.
So it's approaching it as the the calculation of negative space?
Yeah.
Right, so fifteen hundred, if 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 you develop that.
The intent, what this fine to not have a requirement, we should make it clear in here so developers don't have to guess.
So I I I'm all, I I think that's a good idea. What would you suggest? Like, uh, what?
But it does, there there is. In here, it does reference twenty-five percent.
Oh, no, that's it, that's definitely.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, no, that's. Right.
But the question is, in terms of like area, fifteen hundred square feet for residential unit.
Right.
So if we're talking about cocktail lounge, farmer brewery, garden center, all these other things that are. We're just saying, as long as you keep twenty-five percent of the parcel.
Right. We're not, yeah, you're gonna go, now, some of it, it may be, now, you gotta remember, because this is, this is how things, we're talking about. Information vacuum and and we want to make sure, because this would be deliberately, could be deliberately misinterpreted. Something like a cocktail, which we just threw out there and which is true. That's a special permit and it says it right there.
No, I know, I'm talking.
So, but but I mean, I'm saying, I I I don't even know, Bill, sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead.
No, I'm just saying, so some of the uses are still special permit uses.
Yeah.
We're talking about the, a good faith question on the um. A legitimate good faith question would be by, on a buy right use, you know, what do you, could somebody come in and say? I want to develop up to this point under the um PMOD.
Well, yes, that's, I mean, we're specifically talking about the yeses that are non-residential uses, right?
That's correct.
Which is not, I mean, printing shops, private clubs, professional or business office, public market. Restaurants, not including fast food, retail, hang sale, you know, there's a. Question is, if someone wants to come in and build a hotel motel extended stay facility.
Right.
They can do it.
Yes.
Are they gonna take one of the largest parcels and build over seventy-five percent of this?
They could do it. No, not over seventy, up to seventy-five.
Percent of it plus front and setback and everything.
Oh, they're required to be the other stuff, yeah.
Right. But the point is.
Yeah.
How big could that get?
Seventy-five percent of the parcel.
No, no.
So in a, right now, the 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 maximum density. It now, you, at fifteen hundred units per acre, which we can't, we couldn't accommodate on these parcels. Uh, the, if you just, by simple math, because of things like I pointed out, whether it's wetlands, whether it's roads, whether it's these things. It, you you could.
So there's, there's more of that. There's the calculation of open space. There is the the dimensional setback, but then there's the parking requirements as well.
Yeah.
And all of that will, is going, it subtracts it back down to a number well below seventy-five percent.
Unless someone comes in and puts all the parking under the building, you're saying.
And 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 today, as it stands right now, what could happen on those parcels that? There's no discretionary permitting at all.
Right, no.
Right, right. No, I mean, that's, we we would want to make clear as well. So the hypothetical brewery.
Yeah.
Could come in and develop to the maximum allowed, which is probably forty percent under industrial, I'm not sure.
And Bill, I thought that, I thought that some of this is MBTA compliance, the set twenty-five percent open space. Is that MBTA compliance?
No. Oh, yes, it is. Uh, yeah, it is. It's, it's not required by them. Right, we put that in to make sure that it makes a good.
Okay.
A a good um, community. And it, you can, the math works out for. Meaning our our density, you know, requirements with.
And just for context, if one of those proposed would go in. Or propose to go in for parcel like this, it would still need to be considered that there's adequate utilities.
Obviously.
And all of that, right? So the same, the the same considerations apply. You can't just put a hotel in. Unless, unless it's determined that there's adequate utilities to support it.
Correct.
So that doesn't change.
No.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is my next question though. We're just doing PMOD A now.
That's right.
When we come back and are looking at PMOD B and C.
Right.
Are we going to be able to get more specific if we choose to about?
We can make any change we want.
Single to be more compact. Say residential will have this area requirement. Retail would, you know, like, I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I keep, what we would not want to do was do anything that would jeopardize, assuming this was.
Yeah.
Adopted. We couldn't get cute and say, oh, well, yeah, wait a minute, we decided we don't want this many units, you know, or residential, right? Right.
Moving forward with the PMOD overall, I guess.
Yeah.
To kind of have a negative, what did you say, negative?
Your calculation.
Your calculation backwards, right? For just this.
Yeah.
O D A, but then everyone else gets sort of more specific. I mean, I don't.
I mean, for that matter, we could change, we could change this too, if we brought it back. We changed, you know. That one, all I'm saying is that any changes we do, we just want to be careful that we, it didn't, you know, maybe, for example, we said, you know, it's a dumb idea to put. I don't know, a cocktail lounge by special permit there. We strike it, that's not gonna affect the MBTA communities or the density.
We're going to go back to.
Oh, I'm sure. But it all goes to the attorney general anyway. I mean.
And they don't care about cocktail lounge.
I mean, can we all just say, could we say no to some of these, you know, PMOD dash A? Could we just say, we don't want a cocktail lounge there and just put a no?
You could strike a total.
I mean, I would.
You'd strike a total. But I, but you know, I mean, you know, it just, you know.
I have no, I mean, I, I think it's.
It's it's adorable, that cocktail lounge.
I think it's fine. It's just.
Adorable.
So what, what effectively was done with this use thing was taking our entire use table. And then looking at the ones that are allowed in industrial. And then anything that wasn't currently allowed in industrial, deciding whether it was a yes or a special permit.
Okay.
That's right. And if somebody decided, the board felt that something was, they didn't want, we strike it tonight. I would, you know, the exception being the uh residential.
And and if this was in the center of town, I'd be worried about all these requirements, but. Given that it's off in a little corner on the town line, I think we can figure it out.
So, or or Jeff, did you guys find the uh the warrant thing? Let me go check. I'll pull it if you don't have it. I have it on my desk.
I don't think we need it. Warrant's proof, the, like, warrant's approving the warrant on the sixteen.
Well, we got it.
In April?
Printing's on twenty-third.
Oh, right, yeah, okay.
But they're approving it on sixteen, so that's real good. But Pincantle wants it on the ninth, or Pintown recommendations are due, though, needed before then.
Well.
That means we don't have another meeting scheduled to look at that.
Well, what do we think about leaving it?
Well, here's what I proposed for this particular item. I'm back to one of Bill's other points. Um, Bill, now, do you see on the screen where it's in? Well, actually, April ninth is our first meeting in April.
That's like close.
Yeah, they won't be happy because their packet will be. Probably done by.
Right, okay.
Thursday or something like that.
All right, then let's get it right here. Um, so, Bill, where where it's, where you see minimum lot requirements for use? Could we, on the screen right there? Right at the top of that table, minimum lot requirements for use, could we asterisk that and say? Uh, non-residential units shall defer, good reference. Uh, the bottom of the table, open space requirements. Or in whatever else we need to.
A minimum lot.
It it's just an idea to make this very clean, so just asterisk and say, non-residential uses shall good. Refer to these things when determining.
Oh.
Restrictions.
Hmm, no.
No.
If you're saying, we don't require a front yard, a side yard, or a rear yard in any commercial.
It's not what I'm trying to say, but yeah.
That's what it lines, okay. No, we just strike it. We strike the reference to multifamily mix.
Okay.
Quite there.
Okay, fine.
And if they want, then they could get away with it. Yeah, very.
Okay, file, does that sound?
I think that makes sense. Uh, so then I will not, I just, we just, the change nine seven eight will be that the, um, we're gonna strike for multifamily mixed use.
Does anyone have a proposal to not include any of the uses by writers, but from here?
Yeah, I just, I picked what I thought made sense, but you, by all means.
No, I get, I mean.
You want to discuss each other? I'll go down the line?
No, you're you're right. Is that because of the nature of the parcels?
And when we move down the corridor, no, I don't think we're gonna be having garden center.
Never say never.
In our neighborhood district or whatever.
Yeah.
No, it's fine with me.
Yeah.
Um, I do know, in that section, that that last section, that table of uses.
Yeah.
I worry about the very last. Paragraph, other uses, because it seems to don't say, oh, the hell with it, the planning board can just do whatever they want.
Wait, what's something on?
Well, not for those uses, but it says for others, for uses not included in this section.
Yeah.
Underlying zoning, the planning board can do whatever they want.
Yeah.
So does that mean that if we want single family, we could say sure?
Well, I mean, given.
No, because that's not the purpose of the PMOD.
I mean, I, yeah, how, I don't know how you.
It says a range of housing options, so it is the purpose of.
The planning board, it it, let's think about it like we wanted to do with the with the DOD. We use a level of flexibility there for what's it, what's a use. Uh, we we've, we've, you know, we we didn't even have a retail category, remember, old point. So I I think that this will give us the planning board a level of flexibility necessary to to. Adjust as as the market did. If we want to strike that, we'll strike it.
I don't think it's a strike, I think it's.
But um.
I think it's the phrase.
Okay.
Not included, it's not listed, I don't know, but there's still the issue of.
For other.
Intended uses being allowed by a special permit. I I don't think the intent is for a single family here, correct?
No, the the intent is, uh, the, I mean, you'd have to have a planning board that was. In agreement. That of a single family home is now consistent with the PMOD.
Right, but that could happen. There can be planning boards who do that. I'm just saying, the intent of this PMOD is not single family, right?
No, it is not single family.
But I I read that as theoretically somehow potentially in the future allowing it.
Is there any worry that you have other than a single family?
It's hard to.
Well, mono, duplex, I don't know, pool hall, I don't know.
Right, this is like, are you worried about less dense housing, residential things, or are you, do you have bigger?
Not worried about anything. I'm just worried that somehow somebody will find a loophole through the.
But if you put in some sort of sentence that says, references specifically. Less dense housing?
That's the only loophole we'd ever worry about. I don't know, I just. This is the phrasing we use in other sections.
Well, we have it, we have it. And 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 as a result, you know, sometimes I feel that, I think that experience has shown that. Boards' hands are tied when they're, the the regulating board for land use, if something is consistent. And we haven't thought of it today. And the board and their expertise and and and. Uh, and their task is to interpret the zoning mile. It's why.
So maybe.
How do we help ourselves with that? How do you help the community?
So for the housing thing, if that's really intent, then we should list it and say no.
Say what?
List it, say no.
So, so the the in, the intent of the AMO D is reminded with. Right. Well, you know, we say it's helped to be master plan goals and should be combined with MBTA compliance.
Right. Um, goals of the master plan, right?
Yeah, it's, it it's hard for me to see how any other commercial use. Would maybe substantially benefit that. I think, I I think it's the residential uses are, and substantially benefit. Or substantially match the purpose of intent.
Well, we can, should we just strike with the usage?
I'm, I I.
I mean, I could go with that.
I I I don't know the, I get the intent here for that. Or for that section, but. Maybe we just strike it.
Okay.
What do you guys think? Um, I mean, we also add uses to tables um based on discussions of applicants we've done in the past. We did it for dog daycare. In the NBR.
Oh, absolutely.
That's a pathway. Um, if someone wants to add another use.
I don't disagree.
I'm more. I'm more concerned about this being misused than I am it being helpful.
Okay, and I think if the board feels that way. I think the the smart, uh, that's a good point, and.
Any objections to striking it? Okay, there it is.
Okay, there it is.
It was a valiant effort.
We don't want the power.
Um, alright, any other, any other comments or your planning board on this? Have you had a dummy?
Yeah, we're typing. Nine seven nine. Table. The last line still is GFA from the back of the wall.
Nine seven nine.
Table.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Retail, they lost the GFA reference.
One space per five hundred square feet of.
I don't know, one below it.
Oh, what I meant, of. Of G, of uh, of.
So retail needs to work GFA added to the PMODA.
Yeah, I see it.
It's not noted here, needs GFA removed. Um, it's PMODA.
I don't have any other comments. Um, thank you for being here, I will now open it up for public comment.
And thank you for all the work that you're doing, my name's Lisa Bernegaard, I'm with like seven inch over half. Um, I also serve on the sustainability committee, I uh, will say that I'm not here representing the sustainability committee, we are meeting on Monday. Uh, where we'll review this, I don't anticipate. The committee having any issues with the the the, um, the standards that have been set for the sub-district day. Uh, the the comment, uh, and perhaps questioning Chris, I'll be mindful, uh, uh, that I have is. And Bill, is it been intense, at all the preamble language that. Uh, goes, that will go to town meeting, that describes the goals of the, um, the overlay, that does go to town meeting. Uh, this spring, correct?
Correct.
So, in your, I applaud, in your opening remarks, you talked about, uh, uh, several of the goals. Uh, that, there were several, several goals related to the overlay that relate to the river. And the health of the river and leveraging the river as an asset, uh, community asset.
Correct.
I don't, uh, and that's captured certainly in the master plan, but I don't think that that's captured in the introductory language. That you'd like to send to town meeting, and so I, you know, I'd like to focus with sustainability, I can offer some. Some, um, language that does that, um, and if I could, I'll just read some notes, but again, since. The sustainability committee hasn't met, we'll do that on Monday. Um, there are two goals, uh, in the PMOD language that reference the river, one, increase the views, access and connection. Uh, to the river, and that two require the new development proactively protect the river from stormwater and the contaminants contained within. As you've talked about, uh, in your introductory remarks, there's a real opportunity, perhaps, to store a very damaged section of the river. So. As a, as a, um, alternative, I would. Offer this. That the PMOD should strengthen and leverage the active river as a community asset. By increasing views. Same language that you've already had in there. Requiring new development proactively protect the river with stormwater, you, that's, no, that's the same. And then in tandem with local and state regulations, strongly encouraging landowners and new development to restore. The greatest sections of the riverfront to a natural setting. So this is where we, and again. I've been schooled that the overlay is not the, uh, is not the sort of the enforcement, that's with the conservation on and stuff. But. Let's use this as an opportunity to bring really to the the river to the front door of the community and celebrate that as an asset. So, you know, if we can, in this, in the town meeting, in the warrant, really put that front and center.
I understand, I think that we, I mean. The reason. As you pointed out, this is conservation, and we have to be very careful of. Overlapping jurisdictions here, and as I I assume that, um, you, the conservation commission. Um, you you're, they're bylaw. Are the place where this would be most appropriate for that, I don't quarrel with anything you're saying on the goals of. As presented there, I'm saying that at this point, in this. Local legislation, I would want to make sure that anything we're doing. Uh, does not jeopardize the overall forwarding of this article. Subsequent, and for for example. A, doesn't about the river anyway.
No, I understand, that's why.
This is, this is not a discussion, right?
Right.
Um, this, we don't do human agents, and it's because of the town policy. Um, yeah, I I think, I I think, I I think I understand the public comment.
Yeah.
Um. And the board can consider public comments, of course.
Sure.
Um, but that's the board prerogative at this point. Um, I I have strong concerns about putting any type of language into the MBTA overlay district. Um, that's referencing compliance. Um, points that are beyond the jurisdiction of zoning, beyond the jurisdiction of the planning board, in general, might. I think there's liability that could be opened up, we do stuff like that. Um. So I I. I appreciate the goal. Here, um, I have strong concerns though about potential liability that might be created if we. Continue or add references to jurisdictions that are not part of the zoning and the planning board purview. Does that make sense though?
Yes.
Well, to be fair, we already referenced vibrant and attractive. Development.
Oh, no, so it's that stuff I think I'm finding. Right, so.
But my point is that this is the, this is the language for the whole overlay district, so despite the fact that we are using it for the MBTA to make sure that we get what we need to get. This is the language for the whole, and and that is a goal of.
Oh, absolutely, and and I, for example, if.
I could be hesitant to. I I understand that we don't want to jeopardize anything, but at the same time, if this is gonna be the language for the overlay district, if that is a priority of ours. I do think it should be called out.
Well, I I I understand that, but but.
Sorry, let me just clarify, so I I'm fine with. Um, increasing views, proactiveness, and things of that nature, or or goals.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I'm, my concern is not. My concern of adding, um, language that is, um, the compliance point with the conservation commission brings that into better outside planning board jurisdiction. That that could be a liability and creates, um, some real challenges.
Well, we already have proactively protects the river.
Exactly, we have that, yeah.
But I'm just saying, like. Could we say, protect? And repairs, or you know, I'm just saying.
Well, I think at least the first part, what she said.
I'm happy to add, um, some, I'm I'm, I can support adding some language that is. Um, non-binding in a sense, but when we start, when we start having binding language that's referencing specific laws. That's problematic.
Yeah, I I agree.
I didn't hear anything there that.
Was binding.
Was binding, especially since it's in the purpose of action. I like, I like ours.
Well, if we, and the the other thing is, if we're gonna be, um, creating the next three or four districts.
Right.
Sub-districts, wouldn't that, the place for that? If we wanted to have something specific for the river. Wouldn't it be on a district that abuts the river?
So are we gonna have a new purpose?
Well, I mean, you can, I mean, we do whatever we want.
We're not gonna have a purpose statement for every sub-district.
No.
We have a purpose statement for the PMOD.
Yeah.
Yes.
So it has to apply everywhere. So I think it's fine that it went like this, you know.
But I agree.
Well, we're talking about, you know, we don't.
Well, let's, let's.
Order in a room.
Whatever is board's pleasure, I I think, Chris, I understand what you're saying, and and it's something. Yeah, that's not binding.
Vibrant, attractive, and sustainable is not binding, right, talking about.
That's unbinding, but my concern is adding specific language about. About, um.
Conservation.
Any type of specific laws.
For sure, but I'm thinking. We could, uh. In, we could, uh, uh, expand those two points. In a way that would give more. Broad bits to them without being specific.
Or we just don't reference. Any other outside agencies or or regulations, we just, one of the purposes.
Yeah.
Is to, um. Restore the. Uh, riverbank to its natural setting.
That part is, you know, that's okay. Yeah, look, that part I don't have an issue with.
Right, I would point out, though, when we do that. With other encourage, when we we do in downtown overlay district. It doesn't, wh- when it comes before this board. And it's, it's a. Uh, project or town certificate or something like this. Is the board gonna be prepared when somebody says, well, wait a minute, I said, and 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 I, you know, I listened to you guys. Talk about, you're gonna strive to restore this riverbank, and we have a project in. Or to build a, um, a bike, strive for creating bike paths, and it doesn't work out in this. You're gonna end up on the other end of that too, so I point that, you know. The health and well-being of the river is memorialized. In million places in the master plan, I mean, this is clear.
So I'm actually seeing a another issue with this statement now, this says the PMOD should. Do these things, but there are properties that are not along the river and cannot do. These things that are referencing the river.
Well, that's true of the DOD too, the DOD references the river and their.
Yeah, that's regatta.
But that's, that says, that's about the special permit criteria that says. The the project shall, shall do some subset of these things, right, but it says it should do all of these. And there are definitely places where you cannot increase the U R.
Well, yeah. It's.
That's probably.
This, this doesn't say the project. PMOD says. Do this, very master plan.
I mean, and I mean, for that, the purpose of the. The the other thing is, then, are we gonna, would we talk about the purpose of the? Um. For example, we would give the same. Adjustments to the language for pedestrian walkways, for affordable housing, would we do it for bicycle paths? Would we do it for, you know, accessibility and and so on too, I mean, this is a all encompassing, trying to do good. On the whole. And you're gonna have the subsets that are gonna, everybody. Uh, can find something on, I I I'm good with anything that doesn't jeopardize us, so, right, that's, I I.
I agree, the problem is, we're trying to do so many things that if we expanded on all of them, right?
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, we'll be, but at the same time. Um. I mean, maybe there is. Maybe when we go back and we look at. You know, PMODB and C. We can find a way to. I, I don't know.
Well, that's what I was thinking, you tailor it a little bit, Bill's right, you don't wanna have a, I guess you wouldn't wanna have a, a, you know, a. Introduction for each sector, but I mean, you can get basics. Of what you're trying to achieve with it, but. I don't know. Whatever.
We're gonna end up with a separate special permit criteria for subset.
It may be.
We can do that with the layout here, but this is just for purpose.
Yeah. Well, I mean, if we wanted to, I I mean, if we wanted to. The purpose of nine seven. One is to just. In just same way we've done with the downtown overlay district or with the others, is just to kind of give a snapshot, this is what it's about.
Right.
We're not gonna, I I, yeah, right.
This doesn't even specifically reference like. Uh, excessive, like, it, accessibility specifically, which is the problem, you know, so maybe we're just saying, it's just. Lower level. It does say any brief pedestrian access, but my point is, you know, like, we're not calling out a lot of things that the MOD is supposed to. Ideally.
Um, what's the motion though? Oh, another.
Lack accessibility. We're just adding another slash accessibility.
Accessibility or accessible. Accessibility experience, yeah, it's a good one, good. Yes.
Okay. What do you think?
That's pretty good. I think, uh. Yeah, I mean, it's just, so the big. Courage that new development protects her stories driven back. Pretty good, yeah, I think it's good, the best, I mean.
That there's no bindingness to that.
No.
The motion would be to recommend approval to the town meeting of our, um. I will make a motion to approve. Sorry, I will make a motion to recommend. And approve. The. Um. On section, proposing section nine point seven of Powder Mill. Overlay District as presented this evening and amended this evening throughout the session. Um, all, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Five zero.
Okay, we'll make this report with the, um. We'll make a a a good, uh, planning board report that has the.
Yeah.
Rapping. Okay.
Um, I have no minutes, Jim. Would you like to do the honors, please?
Okay, that was all in the hearing, right?
Oh, um, I'll make a motion to close the hearing, thank you, Jim.
I'll take a nap.
All in favor to close the hearing, five zero to close the hearing, Bill?
Now I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second that.
All in favor to close the hearing, a certain meaning.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everyone, for your patience.